I have my mic on. Is that better? Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright. Chris, if you've got the speakers there, if you'll set the timer and we'll start.
Okay, well, the first person we have up is Jim Bran.
Hello, my name's Jim or James Bran. I live at 10154 Avalon Lake Circle in Hampton Park. I'm speaking as, you know, the microphone's right here. I'm not gonna put the mic inside my mouth. How's that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You've got a rowdy bunch here today.
Yeah, they all know me, I'm sorry to say. So, on the computer, I have a presentation. I don't know, Chris, if you can open it or not.
Unless the board wants to deviate, you're still gonna be three minutes.
Three?
Yes, sir.
So, let me tell you real quick. First of all, Ed and Chris and others of Gateway CDD, thank you for coming out to Hampton Park during the water event that we had a week and a half ago. We know that Hampton Park doesn't belong to you all yet, the gates don't. But you all, the lakes, excuse me, but you all were still there taking care of us. Thank you very much. Ed and I have spent some time together, and we know that there's several things that need to be evaluated and potentially done to get water out of Gateway where it belongs, to the Gulf of Mexico. So, some of those things are, we believe that there are defects in some of the construction of the streets in Hampton Park. That may be true of Stony Brook and Pelican Preserve. We believe that one of the major things that we need are controllable, adjustable gates. So, instead of having the lakes be at full pool today, we could drop the water level in all of our lakes, two or three feet, so then we have storage capacity for this rain event we have coming up on Sunday. You may know this, but Lake Okachobe just lowered the Lake Okachobe by two feet in order to have storage capacity for urma water. Duh! Isn't that common sense, guys? Why don't we do that? South Florida Water Management told Ed, and Ed, I think you told me 10 years ago they told you, "No, you can't have controllable weers." That's ridiculous. So, we need to do all we can to get South Florida Water Management to help us control and manage our water instead of letting Mother Nature do it. Now, many of the people in the audience here are from Hampton Park. Believe me, they were dismayed, dissatisfied, angry about all that water in their yards. We had water setting on the street in Astor Place for five or six days. It started to stink like a cesspool. Unacceptable. And we can, once again, it's not Gateway CDD's lakes yet, I know that. Lennar, I don't know, I think they came out on Monday after the major event. And I know that they worked subsequently to clear the drains to the lakes. But this was a perfect storm. We had a huge hurricane in the Gulf of Mexico, Harvey. It caused all the water to be high along the shores. It backed up water into the canals. The 10-mile canal hasn't been dredged in 10 years or longer. So, the water just backed up. There wasn't any place for it to go. We realize that. We need to take action. Ed and I were supposed to meet with Senator Ben Aquisto's staff yesterday. Senator Ben Aquisto will help us get local and state government to help us with this challenge. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Jim?
Thanks, Jim.
Number two, David Caldwell.
It's reference to the 5D.
Okay. Okay. Roy K. Padona, Avalon Lake Circle.
Thank you. My name's Roy K. Padona, and my wife and I are not full-time residents yet, but we're in the process of moving down from Illinois. One of the concerns I have is talking to some of our neighbors as well, is the odor in our water. Every time we come down for a long weekend or a week, it takes a couple of days before the sulfur smell of the water subsides. And I don't know where that's coming from, but when we contacted the contractor when we first moved in, they sent a plumber over, and they said it was because there wasn't enough people living on Avalon Circle. Now that Avalon Circle is pretty much built up, and it's still there, and I'm concerned about the health of my family, as well as my neighbors, of where that sulfur smell is coming from, and what is causing, what is causing it? And what has come to us? I'm sorry? Hampton Park, I'm sorry. And if I could also address one other thing, is, you know, with all the rain that we've been getting down here, we drive through the community, and their sprinkler systems are going constantly throughout the community. Water is a valuable resource, and I think the CCD should be able to do something in governing that the businesses and so forth can control their sprinkler system and shut their water off when we don't need it. It's just a waste of water for us down here. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like me to respond to any, I could give them a quick...
Yeah.
Basically, sir, the watering is controlled on a master meter by your developer, not us. And we did bring it to the attention a couple of times because they're still out at Prado Pesto in that area, running 200,000 gallons a day, irrigation water, even with the rain we've had. They recently shut it down. But those irrigation systems you're talking about are controlled by the community developer.
Is there any way that you can impose fines on the waste of water?
Well, no, we don't have the authority. If the watering restrictions were in effect, we can. And part of our supply is reclaimed water. And part of the problem is, we sell it for 30 cents a thousand gallons, so the price point doesn't hurt them when they keep pumping it out.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
He lives in Hampton Park.
Okay.
Is the water smell from your potable water or your irrigation water?
I'm sorry?
Is the water, the sulfur smell from your potable water or your irrigation water?
Potable water.
Potable water.
And we get that when people coming in and out of town, and the water's been sitting...
People who live here full-time tell me they have the same problem.
And one thing we found with several residents too, and looked into it, is when they construct a home, and it goes in, and they pressurize the tanks and the water, that water will sit in there for months, and occasionally you'll get a water bacteria growing in your hot water tank. So, it just continues and populates itself for that little bit of odor. Is that odor coming from a particular part of your house, or throughout the house?
Especially on the hot water side. But your neighbors that are living here full-time are telling me that they're gonna use the tanks.
And most of the time, people ask them to flush their hot water heater and flush all their faucets for 15 minutes at a high rate, and it goes away. I have a couple articles I could share with you after reading on it.
Okay. Next, Brenda Bella, Pemberton Way.
Hi. So, I'm not sure if you have anything to do with construction part of Hampton Park, but right now, we have about five houses on Essex Square that have the roof tiles just on the roofs, and they are not secure. I addressed Suzanne. I addressed someone from Lennar. They say that they're gonna send somebody. But that's a very important issue right now that we're concerned about, because I'm near those houses also. I can see them. So Suzanne did send me an email today stating that the roof tiles were secure. So, I did call the emergency number, and I talked to Debbie, and Debbie was gonna put a call out to the director. And that was about a half hour ago when I talked to Debbie. So, I just, I don't know if you have anything to do with that issue, or you can contact somebody to get those roof tiles off the roofs somehow, or done?
I don't think they'll take them off, but what I've seen them do is tie them together, like with large twist ties or...
Yeah, and typically, when there's a situation like this with hurricane warnings or watches or declared emergency, Lee County should enforce the requirements to, you know, button up the job sites to make sure there's no flying debris. So, that's a source to go to code enforcement or the building department to get them out there as soon as possible, before tomorrow. That's not a district issue, but it is a Lee County enforcement issue, absolutely. And before, again, before the winds get heavier tomorrow, when they don't go on the roads anymore.
Russ, 12941.
Hi, guys. My name's Russ Hill. I'm a newcomer to Hampton, Hampton Park. Been here for two months. And basically, I wanted to readdress with a young man here in Greensher. Sort of concerned about the last, in the two months we've been here, for three of the seven, three of the seven or eight weeks we've been here, we've had water in our yard way up to the fence line. And that's, I'm sure it's a drainage issue, and I know I don't want to be redundant, but just to reemphasize that, we've had water, I don't know what pond it is, or I don't know what the solution is, but I overheard the last comment. So, just wanted to reiterate that pond each situation is troublesome. We've had water in the street for seven days in a row, and this storm, and the one previous, for five or six days, and you get the cars going by.
What street do you live on?
12946 Pemberton Way in Hampton Park. Secondary problem is sort of minor, but it's aggravating. They can't seem to get Pemberton Way correct with the address. It keeps coming up Pemberton...
What's it called?
Pemberton Place. So, I don't... Well, we addressed the post office, and they said they're looking into it.
I thought I, as many times I've been in Hampton Park the last two weeks, I thought I had every street memorized. Where is that one at? Is it, what quadrant?
What quadrant? What's on the corner versus Essex?
Know where it's at. So, it's in the new area?
It's in the new construction area.
New construction area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One of the things, been looking at the maps and the plans for Hampton Park, and it's a little different than any of the other communities. If you live along either Griffin Drive and the wall, the berm, and/or you live over, what's the road that goes along Stony Brook?
Bellcrest.
Bellcrest, thank you. What WCI did is they put swales in the back of those two, I know, and there may be more. Well, those swales come down and drain into a catch basin.
Correct.
So, if you've had water in your backyard, it's because there's water in the front yard, and the storm sewers are full, and it's coming up. So, that is one of the downsides of that type of a system, is that it can go both ways. It can go into the swale and drop down and percolate into that perforated pipe, go to the deal, and out. But when that pipe is full, it goes the other direction too.
Okay, yes.
So, I noticed that over the other day when I was on the back of Astor Place, at the back of the berm along Griffin Drive, walking through there, and it was just slush. Very, very wet.
It was solid water for, you know, for seven, seven days straight, in the back and the front.
Another area thing that we've seen, I think Chris has addressed it with the contractor, is because that area is under construction, a lot of the drain inlets had the fabric over them to protect them from runoff and debris. And that fabric didn't really facilitate getting water out of there quickly. So, I think that what they're gonna do is, the next time we have storms, is get that fabric out, put it back in, take it out, and put it back in. So, is to allow that, I'm sorry. That's state requirement while they're in construction, to avoid debris and silt and all the... If you go down any of those streets when they're having construction, they're loaded with sand and silt and runoff and all that. So, mud coming off of truck tires, and I mean, you name it. So, they have to have those barriers and put them on the inlets. It's common construction here in Florida. But the issue is, it can easily be pulled out for a massive rain event so that it doesn't act as a dam, because you get that silt on it, that fabric just binds up, and it just acts like a piece of visque.
I wish Lennar took all that out and Hampton Park.
I think that's what they're gonna do, and then they'll put it back when the storm is over. But that, if you're in an area of construction which it sounds like you are,
Yes.
that's certainly a problem up that area.
Can I ask you a question? You said Bellcrest, so did I understand you said the way it's designed?
I'm sure if you could ask the people to sign up and speak if they want to speak.
That's part of the problem you've got, is the construction still going up there, that issue there, because I drove it, and you had a lot of flooded streets up in that area.
Well, we did call, interesting lady, what she was referencing is the design issue. We did have somebody come out from Lee County for water, and they reiterated it's a design issue with the drain and the level of the lake.
We, before we accept any of that, that design issue will be no longer on the table. I'm not gonna sign off as a board member unless the design meets the original plans requirements. And I've got questions of my own about elevations.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, last on the list, Bob Geppert.
Bob Geppert, Pelican Preserve. I've got two things. The first is, there's an action item tonight, 5C. It has to do downspouts in Pelican Preserve. So, I'll be here to answer any questions about that and to solicit approval. We do have the funds for it. The second comment, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but as we all know, we had a little bit of water the last couple of weeks. My comments relative to this is to support the request for trying to get adjustable weers, particularly at Basin 2, leaving Pelican going under tree line. We have got to address that somehow. That is acceptable to all the parties. The other comment had to do with, as far as I was concerned, inadequate emergency planning and response when we have an event like this. As most of us know, it started occurring at Friday night, went into Saturday, went into Sunday. And I, for one, could not get a lot of people that I tried to on the phone. I left messages, I left, you know, cell phones, all that. Fortunately, I did get our district manager, and we did work together on some of the things. But it brought to mind the need for us to have a plan. Who do you call for what item? How do you get ahold of them on weekends in an emergency condition like this? Because the three days in which we were flying alone were very, very frustrating. So, I would like to...
What you're saying is, you were able to get ahold of the district staff, but you couldn't get ahold of anybody from Lee County or South Florida Water Management?
Couldn't get Lee County, couldn't get Tetra Tech, had trouble getting to City of Fort Myers. I eventually did. But it just occurred to me, I shouldn't be flailing. There ought to be a list of who to call, and in all of our key suppliers, there ought to be somebody responsible on weekends, particularly, you know, when there's storms and things like that. So that maybe I can't get them, but at least I know that Chris can get them, or somebody can. So, I just saw that as an opportunity. My takeaway is, that's an opportunity to strengthen our systems. Monday to Friday, I don't have any problem getting people. But boy, when you go into a weekend like this, and had it been a, you know, was that the Labor Day weekend? Was that the three-day weekend? You know, it was just tough. The last thing relative to the drainage and the downspout or lack of. Plantation community had zero water in the streets, comparatively speaking to us. Now, they don't go into our basement, and they don't go into our flowway. But it offers up the question of why is it so much more efficient in that area versus here? And our ponds work group's gonna be pursuing that. And I guess we'd like to get the district and our engineering staff to help us understand why the big difference.
And Bob, when you talk about your work groups, you're talking about Pelican?
Yeah. And we work very closely with Ed's group.
And you'll work with staff?
Oh, yeah.
So, we do it as a collective group?
Absolutely. There's no islands. We're all together.
To follow up on something Bob said that tipped me off over the weekend, is that, and we were over driving around, he took his car, because I wasn't gonna take mine, and it wasn't gonna act as a boat.
He's a coward.
Yes. Can't swim. The issue was, is that if we had an emergency, as we have been told, and by permit, to open the gates, we have to call South Florida Water Management District per the permit. I contacted South Florida Water Management District on Sunday afternoon, and, you know, that's gonna be futile. You get the deal. If it's an emergency, call this number. So, I called the emergency number. It gave me an emergency number on the East Coast, along with a code to identify that it's a drainage issue. So, I called the number on the East Coast and dialed in the code. Guess what the response was?
We'll get back to you Tuesday.
Call 911. That is pathetic. South Florida Water Management District has got to start toeing the line and being more responsible to the residents here. I think they're just a little too political. And I'm willing to test it through the governor's office.
So am I. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, that's all our speakers for today. I do have a slight change also. The representatives to discuss the Gateway High School pulled out this morning.
I can understand why.
I said it was okay, but they will reschedule shortly.
Okay, that brings us to district engineer.
For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. Couple of things, you know, to address with some of the public comments, as well as just our regular engineering update. We prepared a memo and just talked about the event that we had, and now we have the impending urma. But the three-day, four-day storm event we had was somewhere between a 25-year and 100-year, probably closer to the 25-year, which is, for Lee County, for our area, is about 11 and 1/2 inches of rain over a 72-hour period. 14 and 1/2 hits, over a three-day period, hits 100-year event. Just so that everybody knows how the systems are typically designed. They're required to design for stormwater attenuation to the 25-year. Homes are designed, have to be designed to meet a flood elevation of, for the 100-year. Most roads are designed to flood, or to allow flooding at the elevation of a five-year storm event. So, when you do see road flooding in your community, that, I'm not saying I like road flooding, but I'm just saying that's how the systems are typically designed. You know, we spent, we spent a lot of time out there. Staff spent a lot of time out there. We can't speak so much to Hampton Park because we have not accepted that, and we know that they have issues. Looked like probably the biggest problem was in Stony Brook. And, you know, Stony Brook was looked at previously, and I still think that part of the problem may be on that downfall side. We do know there's an issue with, there may be an issue with the orifice that can get clogged up. So, one of the recommendations is to put a debris, you know, baffle there that we can prevent large debris from clogging up the orifice. It's a, I think it's a 6-inch by 6-foot orifice. And, you know, if debris gets clogged in there, then that impedes the ability of water to move out. There's also a question as to whether or not that and the upper weir are at the proper elevation, and Chris is having that surveyed. So, that's being looked at. To address the issues of pumping and opening gates and lowering, we do have two adjustable weers in the system, weers four and five. As we understand...
Where are they located, Danny?
Four and five are, four is the, four is the downstream, or is four upstream?
Four is downstream.
So, it's, it's, the, one is to the, where would that be to?
Ninth hole.
Ninth hole is four, and the other is around Gateway Greens?
Sixteen hole is four, ninth hole's five.
Okay. So, they're, they're probably separated by half a mile, maybe a mile, 3/4 of a mile. But that doesn't get you all the way to the end. That gets you the ability to move water. But, you know, to be fully effective, you would really want the ability to lower it all the way, you know, all the way out. So, with that, as we understand, talking to Johnson, who did the designs for the original system, as we understand, and maybe Mr. Caldwell has some information on that, is I think there was an intent or discussion of possibly putting gates on each weir at some point in the future, although nothing was ever, you know, permitted. It's just, you know, discussion.
We put gates on two and three and got caught and had to pull them out.
Okay, so it was never permitted. We've discussed this with the Water Management District in the past of putting, you know, gates on all of them. And, you know, yeah, it's feasible, but it's gonna be a very difficult process to do that.
Difficult to...
Permitting wise, we're gonna have to show modeling and everything. We're still, we're still bound by our ultimate discharge. Now, that being said, I've worked on other systems here in southwest Florida, neighbors to the north and east. The Lehigh system is a very large canal system that's, you know, it's not a gated community. It's not a community like this, but it does have a pretty intricate drainage system with their canals and their ultimate outfalls. And they actually do have the ability to store and hold water and let water out. And we could do something similar to that if we could get the approval of the Water Management District. Now, as to specifically about either pumping or releasing lowering gates now, we talked specifically to Melissa Roberts of the Water Management District this week. She, you know, said we had to get, we would have to get the approval of the downstream individuals, as well as Lee County, to be able to release water. We disagree with that because as long as, again, we're under our permitted flow, it should not be anybody's right to tell us what we can or can't do. So, we, you know, we disagree with that. But regardless of that, the governor did release an emergency order that allows us to release water to get our system down as low as possible.
So, I have a question, and it may be ridiculous, but what we're trying to do is have a capability to release because we get at max capacity. Right. I mean, or to be preventative. Is there any way to add to or expand some of the retention? You know, because I think WCI, I think two years ago, whatever, didn't they fill in some area? It was proposed, I thought it was a lake or retention over where the linear area is?
I think they were supposed to build some lakes.
We didn't build three ponds, but that didn't really have that much of an impact. We replaced them with a pipe.
The storage is there, but what we have to be allowed to do is, we know a storm like this is coming. We have to be able to get those lakes and flowway down as low as possible. And again, in my opinion, that as long as we're not discharging greater than what our allowable discharge rate is...
That's the issue.
It shouldn't be anybody's right to tell us we can't discharge greater than our allowable rate.
That's the issue.
So, that's the discussion that will be had with the Water Management District, which will include also adding gates into lower all of those weers, which then would allow us to maximize that storage.
I mean, because we're talking about, you know, this is in the event of, you know, excessive rain. And this is not, this is not annual recurrence necessarily.
Recall about seven, eight years ago, I made a proposal to the board at that time of going in and doing this. South Florida indicated that we had to do a modeling. And we got an estimate, preliminary estimate, of about $50,000 to do it. $50,000 would build all the weers we want to do. But an issue I've got for you, Danny, and I'm having troubles with, is that this thing was designed in 1984, '85 by Johnson. I did a lot of these up in Georgia. And you make one heck of a lot of assumptions when you do these. I don't believe this model has ever been recalibrated based upon Gateway as it now stands. My question is, who's got the original model? Because I can't find it.
Well, and if, you know, if you recall, you know, it wasn't this board, but these storm events, they come every two or three years. 2011, we had some pretty major flooding. And at that time, and then after that as well, we suggested to the board that a model be developed, a new model be developed for your community. And you can use storm events like what we had and what we'll have now to calibrate it.
That's how you do it.
And make sure everything is operating.
My question is, where is the original model?
I doubt, I doubt it exists. I mean, that was started something years ago.
See, that's my point. I don't think there was an original model. Everything I can read is that somebody just laid out on a map, and looked like on the back of an envelope, a sketch, and it's worked well. But the problem is, we are much more permeable than we were back then. And it's killing us, or impermeable, I should say. It's killing us. Then on top of that issue is that we've got other contributors that are now coming in to our flowway. It just needs to be changed. But the one, you should bring up the 25-year. What we need to tell people is, you can have a 25-year, three-day storm, or you can have a 25-year, three-day storm. We had one when we were not at control elevation. We were 6 to 8 inches above the control. So, we're, we had no room for any storage. So, that really makes it worse. If we would've had that, let's say, back in June, when the ponds were down, that you could walk across them, this thing would've been a flea on an elephant's, you know what? But as it was, everything was at max capacity. That's my argument with South Florida Water Management District. They aren't innovative thinking. We need to have this on the basis that we're getting a 25-year storm on top of a design that won't take it. Now, if you want to go tell all the residents of Gateway that you're gonna have, and get accustomed to flooding streets, when we have an... accustomed to flooding streets, when we have an alternative for fixing it with adjustable weirs. Now, we may not be able to guess every rain event like that, but give us the opportunity to do it.
And if you have that model, it would help tell you-
Yeah.
-where you need to be for a given storm event.
Yeah.
One, you know, two, two last items. One was talked about Hampton Park being a good example, is, you know, we have not accepted that, but everything that this system is based on are a conglomeration of individual systems that ultimately go into the flowway. Our, our, our general reliance is on their engineers' design and their certification of that design. So, again, getting back to the model, nobody has looked individually, or nobody's looked collectively as a whole, but we're depending on that design and that certification to match what's, what's required. And lastly, regarding, regarding the debris, we, we saw the, the same thing with debris, not, not debris, but, you know, construction materials, and I, I know WCI's been reached out to, and I know since Mr. Caldwell's here, hopefully they'll do what they can to remove any loose, loose construction items before the, before the event. So that's all I had. Hopefully that's consistent with what you have, Chris.
Danny, Mrs. Flaherty had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, could you clarify something for me?
I'll try.
Okay. Are you going to be releasing water? You said the governor says put out an emergency because of the storm coming. Now, are you going to be releasing water so Stony Brook doesn't overflow again? I mean, our drains are filled already.
That's a question of staff. I won't be releasing anything.
The two weirs are open, they've been open since yesterday, and releasing water there, but it's not having little impact on Stony Brook at the moment.
Keep in mind that those are two internal weirs, so we still have, you know, final weirs downstream. So the only weir is that we have the ability to lower our, our internal through the system.
I can address, we have one weir in Stony Brook, and there, it isn't a controllable weir, it is what it is. It's, it's just there, and there's nothing to raise or lower or drain. So there's no way to bring some, I mean, the ponds are at max there, and I'm just thinking, if there's nowhere for this water to go, where is it gonna go when it comes this weekend? We know we're getting a storm.
Need to cut the weir.
Our weir, the weir in Stony Brook, because I have been out there every day looking at it, and I'm not the only one, we're at the drainage elevation where our orifice is, we're at it, and it drained as fast as it was supposed to, it drained as it was designed. Now, I, I've never liked the design, but that, it is what it is. If, the prediction that I've seen, watching, because I'm also watching the rainfall totals, is that it's predicted right now, if the hurricane keeps on an easterly path, the way it is, we're gonna get one to eight inches, somewhere in that range. I think our system will hold that. I don't think Stony Brook will flood like it did the last time because we're-
What did we get the last time?
We're down more than, we're down more than eight inches.
Gateway Golf Country Club had 14 inches of rain in four days, and I believe Bob checked 15 inches at Pelicans Golf Course. So we were in, as Danny indicated earlier, we were on basically very close to a 25-year storm, which is 11 and 1/2 inches in three days, not four days. We were very close.
I think we got closer to the 100-year event, honestly.
Areas, I know that areas of Lee County did hit and exceed when you look at where different places recorded. Yes, Ms. Flaherty had more, I think.
Yes, I did, thank you. What I want to know is, what do we tell the residents when they come and call me or knock on my door about this flooding? What, what answer do you want me to give them?
The truth.
I tell, I told them it was too much water in a very short time, and we weren't expecting it. Now we're expecting the storm, they're gonna say, well, we knew the storm was coming. So what exactly should I say? We've, we've got the spillover, the weir drains through an orifice.
Can't hear you.
And I'm speaking just to Stony Brook, because this is our weir, and that's the community she's talking about. Our concrete weir has a six-foot by six-inch cut in it, that, that's where all the water drains. If it gets above that, there's a spillover that's at a 25-foot-
25.5.
Yeah.
25.5. All of our, all of the foundations in Stony Brook are supposed to be at 26.7-
Seven, I think.
Seven elevation. So we would be spilling over and draining faster over the top of the weir, and it should keep water from getting into people's houses.
But it will be in the streets.
But it will be in the streets.
Big time.
I mean, we had all that water, we had a huge rain event, I think it was closer, between 14 and 16 inches for us in Stony Brook, I, I believe that. And we didn't have water in anybody's house, and that's the important thing, because you could turn on the news and see communities that weren't nearly as lucky as we were. So we did drain, it just wasn't as fast as everybody wanted it to drain.
And I could see that-
And we're looking at solutions, so hopefully that won't happen, but we're not gonna get it done before Saturday.
Madam Chairman, and, and just to be clear, if I'm understanding what Chris says and what Danny's saying, we are doing and have done everything that we can do within our controllable influence. The things that we cannot influence are the things we cannot control, which is the water flow downstream. So if I'm understanding Danny and Chris, what staff has done is everything that we can do, but we don't have total control. Right? Is that accurate?
And I think long-term, you know, again, we'll approach the Water Management District because I think we have some leverage following this, these events, to approach putting in adjustable, you know, weirs on, on all of our system, which will allow us the ability to drain the system as a whole to, to be better prepared for a storm event like this. But as it sits today, you're right, we've, I think, staff's done everything.
And we're, we're documenting everything appropriately so we can build that case, correct? Yeah, okay.
Mrs. Flaherty, I can tell you who had more. Okay, thank you for answering my question, but I want to be able to tell the residents that we are looking into results so that what happened in the past should not happen in the future? I, I, is that what you're also saying?
Well, I think, I think, again, that message is that your system was designed to retain water at a 25-year storm event, that the roads are designed to flood at a five-year, a five-year elevation, and that your, your home, your homes are built to the 100-year elevation, which I'm 99.9% sure is 26.7, and that your spillover is at 25.5. So there should not be a risk of homes flooding, but they should anticipate, you know, roads flooding. So I think that's, those are the facts, and that's what you can tell them now, is that the system was designed and permitted as, as designed, and the best we can tell, it was constructed as designed. We're looking at verifying weir elevations just to make sure that, that the, the outfall elevations are correct. So as the system is, is, sits today, it's functioning as designed. But you can also let them know that we are looking at options to help alleviate the, the system as a whole. I, I mean, this is, you know, we've been, I've been the district engineer for, you know, eight, nine years, and I don't recall Stony Brook continually being an issue. So I do believe that you got more rain and isolated in that area than other areas of the community, so I don't, I, I don't disbelieve that. So, but those are the items, those are the things you can tell them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nelson.
A couple of things. Danny, a couple of items. Where are we at on the issuance of Change Order Number Three and making final payment request, making final payment, not request, making final payment to Florida Line? Where are we at on that?
I have no idea.
We need to get that change order out and send a check to Florida Line in the amount. I think the number, I don't remember if Kathy remembers, it, somebody wrote down in the meeting 70, I'm sorry, 20, 20-some thousand dollars-
Probably have a text from her.
Was the deduct. And I don't remember what that number was, but we need that change order to be able to send them the final pay, payment.
I'll find out from Tyler.
And put ball in their park to accept it or not accept it.
Yeah, I think it was reflected in the minutes that were approved for that meeting.
Well, though, I think the problem was, there was a bust on Kenny's time. We had 480 hours, but it was times an X an hourly rate, and the hourly rate, I believe, was in air, and it was 2594 instead of something lower. And so 480 times 2594 came out to be 12,000 and some change-
Yeah.
Instead of 11. So there was a question about the, the math.
Yeah, that ball's in our court, so we're, I've gotta just hear the staff and find out.
Then the second thing is, is, test your memory, go back to 2010. When you all were retained and did the capital asset study that Andy did-
Right.
When you put together the capital asset list, you had a list of the potable water, the irrigation, the sanitary sewers, the pump stations, the force mains, all that stuff-
Right.
That we had developed in Gateway to that point in time, 2010.
Yes.
Where'd you get that information?
I believe there was a spreadsheet that already existed on Gateway's side, so it was, we did not, we didn't develop that list.
You, so some, you inherited it?
Yes.
Okay. The, the reason is, I'm trying to do something simple to get a copy. You know, every time we have a project, like Timberwood Preserve, month and a half ago, two months ago, came in with a approval, a transfer, and in fact, it looked like that. And on that is a sheet of paper, or within that is a sheet of paper that we approve, which is their engineers' identification of the cost of the assets we're taking. Water lines, sewer lines, irrigation, drainage, roads, stolen yards. We can't find those for anything since 2010 for all of Gateway.
Prior to 2010, or 2010 post?
Since 2010.
Okay.
We have no files, Severn and Trent can't find anything. I'm telling you, I'm so ticked, it's not funny. We're paying them good money, and we're paying them $200,000 plus a year, and they failed miserably. They cannot produce a simple sheet that shows how much money that we put in water, sewer, irrigation, or that we have inherited so as to be able to do what we need to be able to do, and that's prepare a capital asset management plan. And I'm getting really frustrated by it. My thing is, they, they start producing this stuff, and we're gonna start going back and talking about some cuts in some money. We paid them to produce this document, and I don't understand what is so difficult. But where I even have more of a blame is, when that stuff comes in here and it comes to the district, we should have a Manella file folder in there that keeps these things.
Yeah.
Whether they keep it or not, or lose it, we should have this documentation. The only way that we're gonna create this stuff would be maybe to go back to David's place, and he's looking down, he don't want to look at me, and ask them kindly, ask them kindly if they would be nice enough to send it back to us again. Or we go up to the hot box and sit down and start measuring off every set of plans, and I'm telling you, that isn't gonna be fun.
Well, you know, April was working on some of that. I know that she had mentioned, you know, last year that she was trying to do an inventory of turnover.
My thing is, is that we're, we're in this, the process of this rate study, doing an RFQ right now. We're gonna bring these firms in, go through the selection process, whatever, the first thing they're gonna ask for is that documentation. You can't run a utility without that information, and this is getting frustrating. I've asked for it and asked for it now for months, and I, I, I think I'm speaking the King's English pretty well to Stephen, and even sending him a picture of Timberwood Preserve and said, this is what I'm looking for, they can't find it. So my question was, is that what you guys used, and you had a hand-me-down, so somebody else had done it for you. I don't know, I don't get it.
Is that on, Chris, do you have that on your, as an, as an item to?
Yeah, we have the paper records and the bills of sales with the acceptances, but from what I've seen, yeah, I don't see many more than going back a couple of years, it's, you know, been recent. The developer always turns over a bill of sale, the value of all his assets, what they paid for it, and you put that in your asset file.
We should be keeping a spreadsheet.
Yeah, we should have a master document.
We should have a master document.
So if we don't have it, we need to create it and then figure out, you know.
And it may be so easy as going to the 2010, and be it right or wrong, we take what they had in 2010 as gospel, which is the way I was trying to go, and then add to all the developments that have come in since '22, which I thought was, this is gonna be a no-brainer. But it's a no-brainer if you've got them. The problem is, if you don't have them, how do you add them in?
Sounds like something we definitely need to work on.
We need these documents badly.
Thank you, Danny, I'm gonna move us on to District Council.
A couple of things. One is, there's an item that's not on the agenda, and I know, Madam Chairman, it's a time-sensitive issue, but I don't have all the backup today. It's an issue dealing with the Girl Scout building. The, the PUD Amendment and the disclaimer from Lee County, after the last meeting, Michael contacted the broker for the Girl Scouts as to getting a time extension for us to achieve the PUD Amendment and the disclaimer, release of deed restrictions, because the due diligence or the cure periods on those expire September 21st. Hopefully, Michael will step back in in a second, but the response was, from the broker, was one of, they would consider if we, if the deposit was increased and made non-refundable, and they only give us until middle of October. Subsequent to that time, I had a phone call with the attorney, briefly a phone call with the attorney for the Girl Scouts. He forwarded a letter and said, please send us all the stuff you've been doing to due diligence. We sent that letter out this week and received the response back today, saying that they're willing to extend it for 60 days. I just got it this afternoon.
Okay.
60 days, but if the deposit becomes non-refundable. You don't have all the-
Existing deposit.
The 15 deposit. We don't have all the materials today, and part of the discussion, as you all saw the email, was, if the board was going to have, have a thought about continuing this meeting to a date and time certain, you may want to continue, consider doing that at the end, and then we can update you at that time, you know, have all the backup material as to the Girl Scout building, and you all can make a decision, as opposed to hearing it in an oral or verbal presentation. But just, Michael was briefly going through the conversation we had with Sandy Ellis, and she came back briefly saying her communication with her principals were they wanted an additional deposit, to make it 25,000, give us until October 16th, but make the 25,000 non-refundable. And then I had communications with the attorney, and he came back today in an email that they're willing to extend it for 60 days, the cure periods, but they want the existing deposit non-refundable. And from the standpoint of the disclaimer and the release, the, it appeared, and with Hurricane, well, with skewering everything, it appeared from my conversations with Robert Clemmons at Division of Lands at the county, that that could be on an October agenda for the Board of County Commissioners, so that could be achieved within the 60 days. He had no staff indications of any problems. From the PUD Amendment perspective, I don't, it, it sounds like Michael can best address it from the staff perspective at the county. Once we get all the letters of no objection in, they can process that in 60 days, but my hesitancy in asking you to make that decision today is, you don't have all that backup in front of you.
Go ahead, please.
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager. Been working with the Pine Crest HOA, the church, and the four adjacent property owners. Had spoken to all the adjacent property owners. We've, we've met with the HOA and, and the church. To date, I have received one letter of no objection from one of the adjacent property owners, but still have not received any response from the church or, or the HOA and the other three property owners so far.
Do we put a, do we put a date of return on that?
In, in speaking with them, I, I told them that I needed it back as soon as possible.
Can one person stop the deal?
Not stop it, but one person, if they don't sign the letter of no objection, can prevent it from being a staff administrative PUD Amendment, I understand, correct?
Correct, so to answer your question, yes.
It would be a six-month to one-year process, then.
So then that puts us behind the eight ball, which is kissing 25,000 goodbye.
Yeah.
15,000 right now.
Yeah.
They wanted-
So why would we want to do that?
So we would have to go through a hearing examiner-
If, if-
If you can't get the letter.
That's my understanding. I've not had the conversation with the staff, but I think Tyler and Michael have it.
In speaking with the county staff, if we get the letters of no objection from the adjacent property owners, from the, from the Pine Crest HOA and then the church, those are all the affected parties, basically, surrounding the Girl Scout building. If all those people are in agreement and give us the letter of no objection, then Lee County staff feels comfortable in moving forward with an administrative process, thus avoiding going before the hearing examiner and that whole process.
Right.
So you haven't received anything from the church? Because I was the understanding, church council met, and there was no issues. They had, they had a couple of points, but we addressed those.
Correct, that was my understanding.
But we have not received a letter from them?
No, sir.
I'll get it to the pastor.
I've, I've followed up with, with emails to them, you know, asking them if there were press, you know, additional questions or problems, but waiting, still waiting to hear from them. I, I had corresponded with them a few times, as I provided Tony- I had corresponded with them a few times, as I provided Tony copies of the correspondence, and they said that they would, they were forwarding it to the church board and that they would be getting back to us, but still have not received anything to date.
And that's why, Madam Chairman, members of the board, at the end of the meeting, and I know everybody's schedules are kind of skewed, but I would request that the meeting be continued to date and time certain, so we can take this up, you can have all the backup, you can make a more intelligent decision. And, you know, once again, from the standpoint of the disclaimer, I think that's on track to be favorably recommended to the county commission in mid-October at the latest. The sort of, the difficult one is whether or not we would have the administrative amendment. And I think we may have a better answer next week on that, after Michael keeps.
We're going to push the, push the adjacent property owners, the church and the HOA. I mean, it's very doable if we, you know, if we can get those letters from them. The process does not take very long, according to the county.
So, Tony, can we send, you know, a follow-up letter to the, to the parties requesting their, their decision, I would probably say their approval by.
Oh, yeah, I think.
It's another day, so we can, so we can set, you know, a hard, something I'm saying, because I'm under the assumption through some conversations and things that I've heard, that the HOA board is, you know, would approve with the stipulations that they had previously identified, which I think was in line with the, with the residents and with the, with the church. So I don't know what the delay is, other than.
Yeah, I think, I don't want to formalize it too much with those folks. I think, but Michael's had the communication, so he's had the better feel for them.
Well, it doesn't have to be anything.
But, yeah, I think one of those conversations.
We need to set a date, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, hey, folks, we're really, really getting pressed for time, because the Girl Scouts only given us this extension if, and we have, the board has to make a decision by a certain date, so please, can you tell us?
The only problem with that, Tony, is that's a pocket veto, is all that is.
So let me ask this question of the board. Are we available to meet next Wednesday or Thursday at 3:00 to handle just this item?
Or some other items that you may want to take up, because the way, when it's continued, you can take up any other items. For example, you may want to have after reports as to Irma also.
Thursday would work.
Yeah, Thursday would work better for me also. I'm sorry.
This room is used next Thursday.
What time is that, Bob?
2:00.
How long does that last?
Three hours.
I can't do Thursday.
Three hours?
Three hours. How about Wednesday?
I can do Wednesday, I can't do Thursday.
Can you do Wednesday, Ed?
Yeah, I guess so.
Can you do Wednesday at 3:00? Okay, I can do Wednesday at 3:00, so we at least have three people here. So we're planning on doing that.
At the end of this meeting, we won't adjourn, we'll continue the meeting.
Chris, I could have packed that Baraco meeting.
I think we left for the storms.
So there's a chance he might be back.
And I will follow up with the adjacent residents again to try to move things along with them. I met with them in person and speaking with them, they indicated that they didn't see a problem with signing, but.
They have the letter.
They do.
They may just not understand the time-sensitive nature of it now.
I will follow up with them again.
Well, the, does the HOA need to approve that in a, in a formal?
Michael's prepared, has a form of a letter of no objection, I think the county recommended.
Correct.
Because Michael's been on that process.
So as long as no one objects, then it's.
If they get the letter of no objections, then the staff can approve it. It can be an administrative process.
Okay.
Other than that, it's a six-month to one-year process.
No, no, I'm saying the HOA, is that something that HOA would have to approve in a board meeting?
Oh, yeah.
So.
Mrs. Flaherty.
Special meeting for that.
Mrs. Flaherty.
What if we don't get the letters by next Wednesday?
That's when you'll have a decision point to make at that time.
Right. That's why we need to continue it, because we need to know, we need to have all the information next Wednesday.
One other item, thank you, on the Linear Park, I'm about 80% finished with my research on that, and I started drafting a memo on it, but I have a couple of more documents I need to look for.
You should have some time over the next couple of days, right?
Once I can find my files.
He's going to be huddled up. Question on that, is there something in any of the language, because I can't find it, that as Gateway developed, and like Silver Lakes came in, and Pinewood Lakes came in, that portions of that FPL easement were turned over to us?
No.
So that's not a part of the deal?
No, there, there was, there are drainage easements in favor of the district.
Understand that.
There was a discussion a few years back about having portions of that FPL easement deeded to the district with some lakes yet to be built, and then that didn't occur at that time.
The reason I'm asking is, is because we are, as I understand, maintaining and paying for services in that FPL easement, i.e. mowing grass. But it seems like we only mow grass to a certain point, and then the rest of it looks like a jungle.
There was a.
So the issue is, why do, why do we mow half?
And I'm trying, and that gets back to the Linear Park issue, I think, because in looking back at some of the old minutes, it talks about certain areas, certain segments, not the entire FPL easement, that would be part of the Linear Park, because the bicycle paths and those kind of, that's what I'm trying to ferret out.
I just didn't understand, is that, I could understand it if it were tied to a plat or a phase.
It's not.
And it's not. So then we should.
Not yet, I've not found it yet.
So then we either should not be mowing anything and taking care of it, or we should be mowing it all and taking care of it.
What about the?
Well, again, in so far, and what I found, there's references to a certain amount of acreage involved. And so that's what I'm trying to get the final pieces together on that.
And what about the, the area from Hampton Park to Gateway Boulevard headed towards?
That's what I'm talking about.
To that area versus.
Why is this, why is the southeast end nice-looking grass, mowed grass, and the other parts a jungle?
Yeah, I'm trying to ferret it out.
And the rock, the rock sidewalk.
I mean, it's, it doesn't make sense.
That's part of what I'm trying to ferret out.
Who get us that answer?
I'm trying to, yes.
Anything else?
Nothing further at this time, thank you.
District Manager.
It's, it's, like you said, it's. Way back when I talked about, when they were doing the drainage, how they decided.
Excuse me, I don't see it up there. I'll have to check. I just had five items, and I'll just do it briefly. Our lake restoration project is basically complete. Final pay requests are in, and any washouts and sod issues, we'll be repairing under warranty. And we have a shortlist of things that need to be done, and continue to get calls from residents on issues with that. So as soon as it dries out a little bit, contractor will be coming back and doing those under warranty.
What's the warranty time period, Chris?
90 days.
Okay.
On the sod from finish. And that's really where we've had some issues, and some of it was just the lane of the sod, there's some spacing, or somebody's looking at, or some weeds growing in an area. And we have issued also recently two requests for proposals, one for utility rates, fees, and assessment, and also our request to look at the district-wide assessment methodology hasn't been updated in 20-some years, so we'll be reviewing that. Those recommendations will come back in October to the board with the shortlist of consultants. I went up to Orlando on the 23rd and 24th and attended the Estate Revolving Loan Fund Workshop by the Florida Engineering Society. Excellent event. Made a lot of good contacts there, and they presented a lot of information. The only downside is, with all the new water quality grants and initiatives, they've just transferred all that to the SRF program, so they'll be administering that, but they don't have any additional staff to, so they're a little backed up. There is, at this moment, there are no shortage of money.
Good.
And held a brief meeting with WSP engineers. We're modifying our water use permit, and we'll bring that back to the board in November, but we don't see any issues with that.
Hey, Chris, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention the fact that, at least over the past year, the work that you facilitated on replacing and updating valves and the pump station and generators and all the work that's done up to this point, I think really had a very positive impact on even the water that we've had over the past month. I can't imagine, you know, what condition we may have been in had we not done some of that replacement and preventative maintenance. So, and I want to make sure that anyone who's watching or reading the minutes, that that's noted, because that's, I think that's a great accomplishment, in what you've been able to do and what staff has been able to do. And that's really part of what this board did.
Reorg.
And part of the reorg in our board direction is, we've got to fix things. We have to look ahead at the future. And with that, and Bob brought it up, and it's something I was thinking, thinking about, is making sure that we do have documented emergency management protocols and preventative maintenance procedures. And I know that you guys are doing preventative maintenance, you're going out and you're checking things, but especially as we get to rainy season and, you know, storm season, you know, that we have things that are documented, not only for internal use, but also to make that information public, so the residents know that, you know, that we're checking lifts, that we're, you know, doing maintenance check on valves and, you know, looking for debris blockages and things of that nature. Because I think if we can just get that information out and let the residents know, hey, we're going through preventative maintenance, we have emergency management protocols, we have all these things, I think it would be really important just to, you know, just for peace of mind. But I do applaud you for everything that you've done, and we'll continue to. It puts us in a much better position than we have been in the past.
And I want to piggyback on what he just said, and I want to thank you, Chris, and your staff, Michael, and Kenny. I know that you guys were out like 24/7 when the communities were flooding, and you were keeping an eye on lift stations and you, I saw the times that you were coming through our gate in our community, and it was right after midnight, 1:30 in the morning. I mean, it was all night long, so kudos to you, and thank you for caring enough to be out there working when you probably would have been much happier homelessly.
And we appreciate that, and we also were out on the flowway on the other side. I had a contractor out yesterday, and, you know, removing any vegetation, any potential blockage. So, and when Danny said, "We're doing everything we can," we pretty much have every, you know, everything's been out there, and all that work, I'll give the credit to the staff, I just try to get the budget together and help them out. And also related to that planning, you know, we have Joe Di Cerbo under contract, and if weather holds, he'll be here Monday, and we're starting to look at internal improvements and the staff, organization, management, cross-training, things like that.
I don't think he'll be here Monday.
No, but that's, that's the scheduled day.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't plan on.
A northeast wind will get him here fast.
Tell him to bring his Dicky's.
He may, he may want to get out of Sebring by then, I don't know.
An issue that that rain event did, I think, show as a possible Achilles heel that we have, is I am extremely concerned with our 12-inch forest main from Stony Brook up to the wastewater treatment plant. We had to go and throttle pump stations back to be able to get water out of Stony Brook. We now have, in that pump station, Stony Brook's at the top of the, or, look, it's the other way, at the bottom of the barrel, you're at the low end. You come up Gateway Boulevard, you've got a 12-inch line that you're into, you get to the FPL easement, and you get Madderita coming in, you get Predo coming in. One of them is probably, what, David, 75, 80% occupancy, and Predo's 30 ballpark? So we haven't even got them online yet as far as heavy flow. We have nothing from Pastoya coming in. We then hit Hidden Links, we bring that whole part of Gateway Greens in, then we hit the church, which brings in basically everything else in Gateway Greens. And all that goes down, turns the corner, and then we hit the one right down here that serves Pinewood. We got one heck of a lot of pump stations pumping into a 12-inch line and a 6-inch line that scares me. I think what we might want to do is have a revisit of that design to make sure that 12-inch forest main and 6-inch forest main will work, because we can't sit there and have that responsibility of sending guys with walkie-talkies, turning one pump off so that you could turn another one on. They should be able to handle peaks all at the same time. And if they can't handle that, we got a problem. Now, this time, we had one heck of a lot of water. That pump station at Stony Brook, your main station, was coming out the top.
Yeah.
Now, how much of that was inflow because manholes popped in the street and the stormwater went in? Don't know. But it's not right for a sanitary sewer system to be bubbling out the top of a wet well.
I understand.
But we can't take a chance of getting this thing all done and then finding out we can't get the flow to the treatment plant. And I think we need to revisit that with what we now know the flows are, and maybe do a little check on the, in the main backbone of our system, which is up Gateway Boulevard to the 711, north on Gateway Boulevard, or south on Gateway Boulevard to the 711, and then from 711 over here to the treatment plant, and make sure we can handle this several-thousand-gallon-per-minute flow that's coming through and from all those pump stations. We don't gravity anything to the wastewater treatment plant, nothing. Everything is pumped. So we've got a vulnerability if we have a problem with the pipe size.
Okay. And I know that, Chris, I know you're aware of that already.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so.
Madam Chairman, could I ask a question real quick?
Quick.
Thank you, James Brand, 10154 Avalon Lake, Hampton Park. This summer, we learned, all of us, that our lake system in Gateway is all interrelated.
Correct.
One part of it doesn't work, the rest of it may work, but that one part's out of luck. But we're dependent on other parts of Lee County. We can make Gateway beautiful and get all the problems fixed, but if 10-mile channel is still, needs to be dredged, it'll back up. We've got to work with the rest of the community, not Gateway all in by itself. You've got to work with South Florida Water Manager, absolute. You've got to work with Lee County, too, so please do that.
We, we understand. Thank you, Jim.
I know, thank you.
Public Works report.
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager. In my report, we had done the initial and first treatment of the beneficial bacteria to Lake 83. Haven't seen Flavia around, so I guess that's a good thing.
That probably means it's working.
I mean, it's going to take a while. It's not something that works overnight. It takes time.
You mean, you're talking about 83?
Correct.
I take it not everybody else got the same email I got?
There's still.
They got, they had a mess up there, and she was not very happy about it.
Well, it's going to take a while to, I mean, it takes a while to eat that, all that stuff, so. We're still getting, gathering quotes for the restrooms. I've gotten one quote so far, waiting to receive two more from the contractors. Mr. Tinkler and myself met with Mr. Bentley to discuss the soccer field lighting situation, just to clarify things to, after this repair that we had done to Fields 1, 2, and 3, and then also talking to him about Fields 4 and 5, just to get an idea of how long that's going to last us before we have to do some sort of repair, upgrade to the system. And talking with him, we're probably looking somewhere between six and eight, nine years before we really need to do something major again. And at that time, we're, you know, looking at the ballpark of probably somewhere between 250,000 to 400,000 to address those lights. Then I also had, got a little PowerPoint for you to show you Stony Brook overview. This is an overview of Gateway, as you can see on your, on your monitors and the screen. We, I show it all the way from Daniels on the, on the south side, all the way up to State Route 82 and Colonial on the north side, just to give you a frame of reference as to how big the area actually is that encountered this storm event. From the areas that the CDD actually maintains, the hardest-hit areas were Stony Brook and Pelican Preserve. These are aerial flights. We had a drone go up and take pictures of both Stony Brook and Pelican Preserve. This was probably on the 20, 27th, we took these pictures. and Pelican Preserve. This was probably on the 20, 27th, we took these pictures. As you can see, in Stony Brook, the thing, thing a lot of the residents didn't understand is the water in the roadways is actually equal to the water level in the lakes. So that's the way that this, as Danny explained, that's the way the system was designed. The water will, as much as possible, will go into the lakes and then it, it'll overflow into the roadways. In fact, keeps coming up and then eventually it'll, it'll overtop the structure at the rear of Stony Brook. I've got a picture of that, too. And that was one of the things that we did go out, when the water was at the highest point, the water still was not cresting over top of the weir. I, I never witnessed it crossing the weir. It came within an inch and a half of the weir crest, but it didn't get there.
I will tell you what it did do is, it started flowing around it.
I saw that.
Around the edges, yeah.
These were pictures of the Stony Brook outfall. You can see on the left-hand side, that's the Stony Brook side. And as you can see, it still wasn't going over top of the weir. And then the downstream side was, is the picture on the right. And the water was flowing out of there quite well. If you went there actually this morning, and the water levels are down considerably in Stony Brook. I mean, with regards to our ability to take water on right now, the, the system has drawn down almost to the level of the orifice in the weir structure. So, I mean, the system is performing as designed and we are ready for additional water should we have to take some. Also took pictures of the Kinsey Bayant system coming out of Stony Brook. The picture on the top left is, is the flowway that comes out of the control structure and comes into the FPNL easement. That's the picture on the bottom left. That's the water coming across FPNL easement. And it, then it comes into the Gateway Boulevard right-of-way, which you can see there also. Then we took another picture, top right is water crossing underneath Gateway Boulevard. And then the bottom right is flowing into the lake that's behind Hidden Links. And we went over and took some pictures in Pelican Preserve. As you can see, the water levels were very high in Pelican Preserve, as many of the residents, I'm sure that you've spoken to from Pelican Preserve, can attest to. This is the structure that actually flows underneath Tree Line Avenue, the Box Culvert, that then goes over to I-75 and flows under 75. And this is the picture of the large 32-acre lake that's on the west side of I-75. And the bottom right is our discharge into Six Mile Slough. You can see that white fencing structure, we actually, that was the fish barrier. That, that was, that was actually removed yesterday. It was full of quite a bit of material. And we're going to do repairs to that and put it back in at some point in the very near future. But the system is flowing very well. And anticipation of the hurricane coming, we, we remove that and expect the, the levels in the lakes to, to drop some more. And then I have one quick video for you of... And this was taken, oop, how come it's not going? You can't see it.
Okay.
Sorry. It's not showing up on your screens.
That's okay.
That's it.
That's okay. Is there anything else you wanted to make us aware of?
No, ma'am. That was it.
Okay. Thank you very mu- I, I had, Chris had sent me the aerial photos and I was grateful to, to get them. So thank you for, for doing that.
Hey, Mike, we have that drone, right? We operate the...
No, it's a, one of our, we have contracted. He'll come out and fly for us when we need it.
That brings us to Utility Manager.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, Utility Manager. I'll just give you all a brief rundown of what happened, of, from the utility side. I really came in on Sunday. Isaac, we fielded almost 70 calls within about a seven-hour, seven-hour time period from storm drains, sewers popping, waters coming into the backyard, you know, our streets are flooded. We basically had run-of-the-mill, pretty much everything was covered. Isaac was just completely overwhelmed. There was really, I mean, when you get that amount of calls with that amount of people and that amount of time, one person, I came in, I started working the calls to let him start swinging out. And then I, I got overwhelmed, then I started, then we both started, we made a list, we kept, we just, we tried to get to every single person that we could. But there was, at the time, and what was, the way it was unfolding, there really wasn't too much we could do. Sunday night, when I left Stony Brook, the master station was in alarm and grossly hydrologically overloaded. And the number four station had just gone into alarm. So when Monday morning came in, the system was just completely overloaded. There was just, we could not move the water out of Stony Brook. Girls, the Girl Scout Station, just to give you an example, the Girl Scout Station is about the biggest station we have. It pumps the most water in per, for the year. It was on both pumps and about three-quarters full for 12 hours. It was not until we got that station to the point where it was back into normal leveling, that we could start working with all the other stations to try to get them out. What happened with, with Stony Brook, there's five stations in that system, all of them pumped to the master station, and the master station pushes it out to the, into the force main. The three stations, satellite stations in Stony Brook, really didn't get overwhelmed until Monday afternoon. That's when, when I, we were at Station 4, we started seeing the level, I mean, rapidly, because we were sitting there watching the level come up. And once we saw that, we, we, I called in and said, "We're gonna have a leak. There's, there's just nothing we can do. It's coming in too fast. I can't pump it out as fast as it's coming in." With Station 4, that's where the biggest problem was for, for operation. The, the, the master station, we never lost a pump, we never lost an alarm. There was, there was nothing wrong. Everything was working the way it was supposed to be. It was just coming in, it had just came in so fast. Because you gotta figure, there's four stations pumping into that station. So I was gonna say, and Stony Brook condos, the, the station over there and Station Number 2, never even went into alarm. The only time they went into alarm is when we put them into alarm, to turn them off, to try to get the, to relieve the pressure to the master station. But what happened was, when we finally figured out what was going on, we, we had a really good grasp of system-wide, what we were pumping, it came down to a station in Pelican Preserve. The master station at Arizo, I think, has 15 connections on it. And that station could not hold level with two pumps running. So what we found was, we shut every station down on the 12-inch line, and we started pumping down Stony Brook. And as soon as we did that, we saw the level in the master station start dropping. We knew it would work. What happened was, is that our people at the Arizo station said, "We can't hold this level. I have to turn, we have to turn it back on." So we turned it back on, and it took 45 minutes, with two pumps, to get that station down to the point where we could turn it off and then start pumping Stony Brook again. What we found were two sewer caps that were, one was either hit by a car and nobody knew it, it went underwater, there's an infiltration line. So what we did was, we had to stop everything we were doing, go out into Pelican Preserve. We couldn't get to the front, we knew the infiltration was coming in at Arizo, so we started there. We had that front manhole in front of that lift station was underwater, so we couldn't pop it. So we went to the next one. And then from there, we just followed, followed it around, found one leak in front of Pestoia, where it had obviously been run over by a truck. You knew, you would have never known it. When we got up into it, you could see the whirlpool 6-inch line, just dumping right into the line. We found that, we capped it, got back to the lift station, and then we, it was still coming in. So we started again, we went the other way, followed that one, followed the leak all the way up the road. And we found a sewer cap that had been pulled over, unscrewed, and then they funneled the dirt right, you know, so the water funneled it right into that, and it just dumped right into our system. Once we got that off, within 10 minutes, Stony Brook dropped foot. And we could, we kept that station on one, one pump for, it's still on one pump. There's 15 people on that line. And it was-
Somebody do that by hand?
Somebody did. Now, the, the first one on Pestoia was an accident. I mean, we did, that, with the way it was situated and the way it was sitting, that was not intentional. But that one we found on, on Preido was intentional. It was lifted up, turned off, and we were looking for them. You know, like, what are you doing? And they funneled the dirt, I had the video of it. They funneled the dirt and dammed it in, so it would just go right into that. That was it. So as soon as we found that, we capped it, and we, that was it. We were able to, we had, we had seven people on site, six people out at the stations, and we shut, we would just shut them all down and just pumped it out as best we could. So that was, that was basically what happened. But it, it came down to, we would have had Stony Brook pumped out-
Yeah, I agree.
Nine, 10 in the morning, Monday morning, had that not, had that, we had, it took us about three hours. We had to basically go chasing around leaks and figure, trying to, we got lucky is what we did, and found it. Actually found two 6-inch sewer caps that were removed.
And who would have the knowledge to do that, Kenny? Would that be a sub, or...
It was, my guess, the house that it was, that, that we found, the, it turned over and unscrewed. First, they took the cap. We couldn't find a cap. We couldn't find the cap to cap it. It was all built, but there's nobody there. And then right next to it-
So there's no residents in that area?
No, no. And it's all, the house, in between the two houses, one is under construction, one is completed. And it was in the, it was, and they had the sod laid, so there, it's ready to go. But there is nobody living in that place. So, so we assumed, we assumed it was a contractor. And when they saw us coming, and when, they were there, and they saw us coming, they, they jetted. There really wasn't too much we could do, other than to get the cap onto the line as fast as we could and shut it, and shut it down. But that's, that's basically, we lost about five to six hours on that, just with that. And I would say, the, the flow going into Arizo was not as bad with one. It happened, it had to have happened, you know, from 10 to 2, somewhere in that time where they went out there and moved and removed it. They want, I guess they wanted their cycle, I don't know. And I, and just to say, that system is sealed because once we capped those lines, oh, sorry. Once we, once we capped those lines, it stopped. I mean, it was instantaneous. Boom, done. And then as soon as, as soon as we got that, once we got that settled, we shut down Girl Scout, we shut down Hidden Links, we shut down everything we could on that line, and Stony Brook, it just went right down. Then we, we shut the other stations down, started pumping down the satellite stations, we shut, turned everything back on, everything, and then let it fill back up. And it got to about three-quarters full and stopped, started coming back down again. So-
What date was that?
That was Monday, Monday. Monday morning, Monday afternoon. And the master station didn't come out of alert, couldn't come off of alarm until about 8:30.
Nine o'clock at lunch?
And then the number four station, the last one, went out of alarm at about 10:15. And to say, that Stony Brook stayed underwater for another two days. Those stations never went back into alarm, they never went back on, it just ran just like it was supposed to do. What we found was the, two sewer caps in Stony Brook were breached. So that's, that's where a lot of our INI came from. And other than that, we've been spending this week doing, right now, we are out running all the generators, we're running over the nightmare scenarios, trying to think of the scariest thing possible and how we'll be able to deal with it, when it comes, what we're, what we'll be doing. We've got all the generators online, all the generators are working. The Thompson pump is ready, so it's kind of hard to anticipate. We would try, we were gonna stage a generator at Stony Brook, the clubhouse, put it at the master station, leave it there. And we will stage a generator at the Girl Scout Station and leave it there. If we lose Girl Scout, that's, that's game, that's game, set and match. That is a critical point. We cannot lose that station. So we will have a generator there, or we will have a, the Thompson bypass pump at that station. And then we will just, we're gonna, the, the southern end for the utility system, with that amount of rain and that amount of problems, we had zero problems with that. It was all on the northern end. Stony Brook, Pelican Preserve, that's where it was, that's where we spent 90% of our time. And that's, and say, today, we're out with the generators, on the last generator, we've got them all up and running. We haven't run into any really major problems, but we want to make sure that all four generators are ready to go. We have three people that'll be ready to come in. We'll cut our way in to get in after whatever happens, happens. The, another issue is that, say, just to give you a number, the, the plant next door took in 2.8 million MGD in one day. Average flow is about 1.4, and they doubled. We are sitting at about 20 feet right now. We have absolutely, almost no storage capacity in, in those tanks down there. We're just not putting out, we're putting out 2 million gallons a night, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, the water, the irrigation system is not, it's really not running. It's just, nobody's watering. So we've got a, an issue with capacity down at the, whatever comes into that plant's going into those tanks. And if those tanks are full, we've got to shuffle it around. We've been trying to run our irrigation system, but it's just not enough. So we've, we're just gonna have to wait and see. We are, we say, we've gone over scenarios for the last two days, trying to think up the worst possible things that could possibly happen to us. If we get hit, we're assuming we're gonna lose Gateway Boulevard for a period of time. So that FPL easement is prime real estate. We have got, that will be where we would get to the northern end of our community. So that's, that's about as, they say, we'll be, in between where it goes into Hampton Park, we can go in there and then get down across into Gateway Boulevard. But in between that area, I'm assuming, I have to assume that we're gonna lose Gateway Boulevard at, at multiple points. And Griffin, coming down here, will be another one.
Kenny, do we have a standby generator on the reuse pumps?
Oh, that's, yeah, with, with Lee County, yes. Their, their generator-
Pump into our system? Does their generator service our pumps?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's all, that, that is, it's hooked into their, they have two, I believe, full-
So that we don't have an issue of water coming out our ears over there? We'll put it on the system somewhere, probably on the common area irrigation.
Even that is not enough.
That's all we can do.
Because we gotta have, we gotta have more going out than we have coming in. If, it just, it just doesn't, the numbers do not work. So I mean, we say, we were, we were going over scenarios with, with Lee County-
And this is with all the wells shut off?
All the wells are shut off, no. No wells at all. And say, we, we worked with Lee County, they wanted certain notifications if we go into alarm, if we've got stations coming in. They made it very clear to us that they would much rather have, if we're gonna have a spill, that we can only pump it in so fast. He said, "If need be, you just turn on both pumps." And we'd rather have a spill over here at the plant than out there in the community. So that's, that's the best we could come in. That's the best we can do. We cannot overwhelm them. That's another issue. They're only there until 11 o'clock. So if we get our stations on at 12 o'clock at night and we turn on the pumps, all of a sudden, that station, that, that plant will get hydrologically overloaded. It'll just start pouring in there, and there's nobody there, nobody knows. So we have to assume we're gonna run on one pump. And if we go into emergency operations with the generators, we're only gonna be able to run one pump as it is. We cannot run both pumps with the generator. It's one pump.
You have to alternate them.
Excuse me?
You have to alternate them.
Yep. Yep. That's, that's, that's the best we can do. If we get into real trouble, we will be using the Thompson pump. We will pull that Thompson pump in there and drain that tank as fast as, or drain those wells as fast as we possibly can. And say, with, with what happened last weekend, if we'd have lost power, we'd have been in some real trouble. That was, I mean, that was the only good thing that possibly could have happened with us with utilities, was that we did not lose power. If we lose power-
Mike explained to everybody, the Thompson pump is a bypass pump-
It's a bypass pump, yes.
That we have the capability of taking suction and going around- That we have the capability of taking section and going around the other pumps.
Right. We can completely divert the panel, the pumps, everything in that station, and that acts as the station. And then we have the generators that will run the pumps, one pump at the station.
Thank you very much. I know that you have done, you guys have done a bang up job. Really can't be happier with the work that you've been accomplishing in the last two weeks especially. You've been doing double overtime.
Yes, we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody want either one of those items polled?
Uh, the minutes, I just had a question on the minutes, one item.
Is it a correction, or?
I don't know what it is. Uh, get Paul, or, Chris, can you pull that up? The, I think it's the second page or third page. There's a vote there taken, and it was zero to zero.
Oh, yeah.
This is a football game or something? I, I didn't get that vote at all.
Line, line 70.
Line 70, yeah.
Yeah, I don't understand what that was at all.
Zero, zero, yeah, that needs to be corrected.
That's the only thing I had.
Uh, line 76.
You pulled that up, Chris?
Oh, that was the, the signs in Pelican Preserve.
Yeah, it didn't say anything about a, there it is, right there. It, it just is-
Yeah, I think that should just go away, because the vote was actually taken on the next page.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's a personalist. That's the only thing I had.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? I will take a motion to approve consent agenda items for A and B.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okey dokey.
Financial reports, Mr. Bloom is not here today.
And that brings us to action items. 5A is approve expenditure Pelican Preserve Pond 10.
And this item is basically a continuation of the installation of house gutters and drain pipes and basins in Pond 10. And they, they have the expenditures for it, um, and it's over for $10,000. So I have to get the board approval, and then we'll issue a purchase order.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. And then approve expenditure street light LED retrofit Pelican Preserve.
And same, Pelican's gonna be doing a retrofit, um, into LED bulbs on tree line, $20,295.
Couple of questions. Did, uh, are, are these 240? These 240?
I'm not sure. We did this already on Pelican Preserve Boulevard, now driving to-
Probably 240.
It's a quick payback.
Did you get, did you by chance get with FPL? We just went through it over at Gateway Greens.
Yeah, we've been working, we've had Castle work with FPL.
Okay, we've negotiated a new rate?
Yep.
Yeah. Substantially less.
Oh, yeah. Was it a seven year payback, or two year payback?
Three year payback.
It's a real quick payback.
Yes, it was.
On the lights, but we're also finding large savings in the repair costs.
My, my question was, is that, did you run into problems with your heads to accommodate a 240, uh, you going with the corn cob?
You're way above me. It came in the meeting, I didn't hear it.
It, it, do you, do you have the shoebox designs over there, like we have in Gateway?
It's a light. You turn the switch, it's lights.
You don't turn a switch?
Hey, more than that, I told you, more than that.
I thought I was bad on electrical. The, the issue, the issue, the reason I ask is that we're doing it in Gateway Greens. We've got about 100 to switch over, but the shoebox design, the square like we have on all of our lights here, if you get the 12 inch square box, it will not accommodate easily, without Rude Goldberg-ing it, a LED light. The 16 inch will do it real easy, so that's why I ask.
The only issue we had in the change, from a resident point of view, is these are much, much better.
Well, you can get the soft white. You might not have gotten that.
The ones we put in were much, much better. We got a couple complaints.
They, they will be.
But other than that, it's a money.
Yeah, when you're taking and having a reduction in the, uh, electrical cost by about 65%, it's a big deal.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Yep. And, did you second this, or not?
I second the other one.
Oh.
I need a second from somebody, anybody.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. 5C.
And this is another continuation of the Pelican Downspout Program. And, uh, in, in the different communities, and the total expenditure is $196,0125. And basically, to prevent erosion from the homes, they're, they are actually hooking up the rain gutters of folks and taking them out and doing the hand digging through the irrigation systems. It's an expensive and time consuming process.
Are, are, are these the bubble ups? They're not direct connections to the lakes?
Some are direct connections and others are bubble ups, depending what the slope of the bank is. Where we have, already done some remediation at the bank, we're running it onto the yard. Where we don't, we take it right in the pond.
And Bob was kind enough to show some of those areas to me when I did a tour of Pelican.
And Chairman, if I may, and just for the record, that Chris and I had this conversation, as well as Mr. Gephardt, that each of these projects are individual standalone projects. And they were, uh, because one of the concerns was whether or not there needed to be a more formal competitive process as opposed to a less competitive proposal process. And based upon conversations way back at the inception of this project, uh, working with engineers, I was comfortable that they were individual projects.
This is about pushing the limit, isn't it?
It, it, if you consider, if you consider it as one project, it would have exceeded the limit, but-
Oh, I see all of it.
Because it's 195, but they're each individual projects. And so I'm comfortable with, did not need, had, did not need to go through the formal competitive bidding process. I'm gonna put that on the record.
One other little aside.
Yes.
Bob, Governor, Pelican Reserve, we've lost two contractors that tried to do this for us. Two of them have walked away. And we lost our third this week, where we hired Morris Riley to come and do it. They did five homes, and I got a memo, it went to Chris and I, that they just soon not do it. They weren't doing a very good job. We weren't happy, the residents weren't happy, and most of all, they weren't happy either. So we're gonna break off that relationship. We do have one other guy named Manny that was recommended to us by Danny.
Manny Hermina?
Manny whoever, and he has, you have to give us a bid, but we're, you know, avidly searching to make this thing more competitive. We're thrilled to death with Copeland. They have undercut anybody else, but just for appearances, we'd like to get, make it more competitive.
What's got everybody bugged? What's got everybody bugged?
It is hard, hard work.
Big rocks.
It's a family operation with, with Copeland Southern Enterprises. Dad beats the hell out of his boys every day to get it done. Everybody else, people walk up and say, I'm not gonna do this. You can't use trenching equipment. You cut cable lines, you cut irrigation lines, you cut, you know, you cut everything. And nobody else is willing to do the work.
Can you find big boulders?
Oh, yeah. The poor results exist table.
Okay, motion to-
May I ask a question? May I ask a question in regard to this? Yeah. Uh, we're in Hampton Park, and I've got the exact same problem that you're defining here. Two gutters coming down into one 4 inch pipe, and it overflows. One to one and I, and-
Okay, I'm gonna, since it's, that's in Hampton Park, can you talk with him afterward?
I know. So my question is, how can I bring up the same problem for Hampton Park that Pelican is already prepared?
You'll, you'll need to, you'll need to discuss that with him, how to get that accomplished? Because it's not something the CDD does.
Yeah, hold on, not, not that simple. We're going to be accepting it.
I know.
So we need to make sure that the way it's done in Hampton Park is a way we'll accept it. Because the one thing we don't want to do is, we do not want pipes going into the lake.
I understand, but it's not.
The problem they've got in the high shot is that they do two drainage pipes down-
Sir, sir, if I could, if you're, if you're going to speak, we, the chairman is trying to maintain day quorum.
It's a good point.
And, and if, you need to-
Sir, you have to fill out a sheet, and you can't just walk up to the podiums. Yeah, it's, it's just a quorum.
Okay, I got a motion to approve this, agenda item.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
Put that in the list.
And, agenda 5D, turnover of-
Yeah.
Conveyance of Casella 1 and 2. Roads, drainage, lakes, and utilities were requested to be transferred to Gateway from WCI. Staff recommendation is that we would accept Casella 1 because it's almost built out on a vertical, uh, but not accept Casella 2 because no construction is started. And we typically find a significant amount of damage to, to the systems out there and the utility systems from the vertical construction.
And I know that I, I believe all of us had the opportunity to meet with Lennar to talk to them about this.
Which isn't cases.
And I'm just gonna put out there that my feeling is, I agree with that, that Casella 1, because it's near completion, I don't have an issue with that, with leaving the 10%. Have they done a final lift out there?
I do not believe so. They've not done a final lift or completed, uh, construction of the curbs or the repairs. They're out there working.
So that would certainly need to be done, I think, even before we would accept Casella 1. Mrs. Flaherty?
Yeah, I'm looking at the roundabout, at the entry. Okay, all right, that has the brick in it. All right, there is considered, considerable weeds there, bricks are broken, and the, when I looked at it, it looked like it was unlevel. Because I did go out to look at both of these. Um, so there is no, there is not even a construction vehicle out there to start building. And they are, um, building the last house, and, um, it does say in our permit, criteria manual, okay? Um, if there's any deficiencies, that construction should stop. It's on page 7. Um, the developer will be notified and writing that it deficiencies. And since there is a deficiency there, okay, it should be corrected. And so I'm wondering why it's not corrected.
So Chris, can you talk about Casella 1? Um, this might help Kathleen and, and others that have questions. Like, so if we just talk about Casella 1, we would approve with what conditions?
Well, there is no conditions. When you turn it over, you basically are accepting ownership, operation, and maintenance. There's a warranty period, and a 10% of the bond is held, um, to make repairs.
Are they working on a punch list? Is that what they're working on, in Casella 1?
I think they have, but, but, uh, when we walked out there most recently, you know, Mike and I were both there, and we found 67 instances of cracked curb, cracked gutter.
But I mean, have we, they, they, they're aware of those, we've made them aware of those items? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And certainly, we want that curb being fixed and the final lift.
Yeah, well, what I was going to do is make, make the recommendation, and as much as I see where staff's coming, I've read that permit criteria manual too, I'm blue in the face. And, uh, it needs some work. But it does not allow us, in my opinion, to do what we're trying to do. I would make the motion that we proceed with upon approval of the final punch list of items. We approve Casella 1. And if we're concerned on Casella 2, I'm trying to get away from the verticality. That is not implied, nor does anybody I know even do that in the business. I would take Casella 2, accept it, only I'll talk about an increase in the bond if we have a concern that it's not up to standard or may be more expensive for us to operate it, as witness to what we've seen in some of the other areas with problems relative to drainage. So that we're not tying them up to have to have a vertical construction. That's just not, that's not standard.
I understand what you're saying, but Ed, we've listened to you for years, say, we shouldn't be accepting these things when they're, they're damaged and it ends up falling on-
And that's what I'm saying. They, they've got to take, we have to, our job is, one, prove the plants, then see that the construction is done right, and issue them a punch list. I believe on Casella 1, that's where we're at. We're, we've issued them a punch list. We don't take it over till it's done. That makes Casella clean. It's now on our nickel. And the contractor is out of the way, not doing in any verticality that's causing the problem. Casella 2, different story. My issue is, I don't want to see us getting into the position of telling the contractor, he has to start building houses, or he has to have them 100% complete. Good example is, I've got a house or a lot in Gateway Greens that hasn't been built on since 1985. We gonna hold the bond for one lot? Or have a nine lots? The issue is, nobody does that. I would take, and instead, if we have a concern, we accept it. But if we have a concern, we raise the bond to protect us.
Because that's what we're trying to, we're, we're trying to cover incurred costs-
Yeah.
That-
Or potential incurred cost.
Right. I don't think it should-
Will you let Kathleen talk?
Yeah, go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm patient. All right. I also, in our criteria manual, um, I-5, it says, "All major deficiencies shall be corrected prior to continuing construction work." They are working at Casella 1, and there are some construction, there are some deficiencies. All deficiencies noted during periodic inspections shall be corrected.
That's not the problem, Kathleen. The problem is, is that this occurred after, and as a part of the construction. I agree with you. We have given them a punch list, in my opinion, is, uh, on Casella 1. Fix the punch list, do the final lift, we'll take that one over, stay at the 10% bond, we're off and running. Casella 2, because there are deficiencies in Casella 2, and that we're, we haven't got an, uh, an issue to where we have an obstruction or a blockage or any of that, I can see we can take it. But if we have concerns about the same damaging, uh, impact of subs, like the guy that unscrews a cap and lets the water come in, you're not gonna stop that unless you have somebody out there with a gun all day long. We're not gonna do that. So use the bond as our, let's say, safety factor to accept it.
But as long as, once we agree to take over Casella 2, then any damage that's done out there, it's gonna end up being the responsibility of the CDD staff to get somebody to come in and fix it.
And, and we use, we, we utilize the bond to compensate us for that.
So why wouldn't we tell them, when you get 90% built out, then we'll talk about the bond and we'll give you a punch list? Because we know damage is-
Margaret, I don't think there's any, any grounds on any, any, show me a legal ground that we have to do that. I don't see any legal ground that we have to do that. None. I'm all ears. If the attorney could tell us we have the legal ground to do that-
We have the ability to accept projects in phases. I think we've had that discussion before.
And that's what we-
We also have the ability, uh, I don't have my memo with me today, I apologize, to, to have an enhanced bond amount based upon the historical incidences that occurred in Casella 1, the extensive cracking to the guttering, guttering system, and engineers' estimated cost to do that. We can request an additional roadway impact statement also, I believe, because we have these offsite, well, impacts from the vehicular traffic. Based upon the utilities report, we have, you know, ability to factor in a cost, estimated cost based upon historical activities and costs of them playing around with the utility system and engaging unlawful tampering with the utility system, which is a crime, by the way, to, to do that. So-
Though we can't find anything anywhere.
No, it's a crime. I mean, it's, you know, it's a, no, it's a crime. I mean, it's something you can report to law enforcement at certain points in time. So I, I think that, and, and one other aspect too is, you know, we, we may want to look at also the ability to, I haven't double checked our utility rule, you know, not have hookups until they comply with all of our rates, fees, charges, and other rules and regulations too, uh, which includes-
Well, that's in the manual.
Yeah, you know, so, so the ability to hook up is, you fix the system. So, I mean, I think we have the ability to calculate that cost and put in an appropriate factor for not being completed for two or three years, and say, here is the bond we want you to post. And, and I think you need to have a generous bond amount based upon historical activities. But again, you can accept in phases, in my opinion. You can say, Casella 1, yes, Casella 2, no. Or Casella 2, but we are going to, subject to us coming up with a bond amount based upon the current, what was it, like 37 photographs, however many you had, I guess that P-Pac took and Chris took, showing the extensive damage. It's not just cosmetic, it's structural, to the gutter system.
And my concern is that we know, I mean, there is no way that construction is gonna take place out there, that damage isn't gonna be done to infrastructure. It's just, it's a given.
Correct. Right, and that gets back to the ability to withhold connections or utility service until they pony up.
That's the risk you're running, running a utility. And the only thing you can do is cover yourself, and that's what bonds are for.
If you can do it incrementally, just take one, refer to.
I believe you can do it in phases.
And I guess, uh, I guess at this time- And I guess, I guess at this time, I'll ask David to come up, because when do you anticipate being able to fix, do the repairs in Casella 1 and do the final lift? Has that been scheduled?
And while David's coming up, I'll just make a comment. I mean, I think we've been talking about the permit criteria and our ability to enforce or kind of learn from, from actions of the past.
Past mistakes.
Right. But for us to kind of expect to change some of those on the fly, I don't think is necessarily acceptable. We need to make the permit criteria a priority to go in and make the changes that we need to make. And we've been talking about it literally for a year, probably. So we need to take action on that. The one thing that I would like David to speak to or us to consider in part of the terms and condition is, we still have that, the issue of that flowway, that.
The island.
The island, and.
It's not an issue anymore. South Florida doesn't have a problem with it, and we've got a release.
Well, I think it's still an issue that needs to be addressed. It's, that is one area that's going to cause, it's going to cause problems regardless, and that is something that we're going to have to take on and incur costs on. So I add that on to, on to the table. I would be willing, you know, to, to look at Casella 1 and increase in the bond on 2 with, with the addition of some kind of solution for that, for that flowway. And I'll just add that as David goes in.
Good afternoon. Dave Caldwell with WCI and Lennar for the record. Thank you. I, just to acknowledge, WCI did meet with the board members individually to express our concerns and from our perspective, and we appreciate that opportunity. To answer some of your concerns of what you've already discussed here today, you know, I can't give you a clear in, right now, you know, what you've said is acceptable to the company. I will have to take this back. We, we're very concerned about so-called rules being changed on the fly, project by project, and that concerned us because it doesn't give us certainty of what needs to be done, or, and why it needs to be done. But totally understand some of your concerns that you've expressed here today, if not previously. You have a punch list of repairs. We should be addressing those. It's not, you know, it's clear to you who have inspected it. I see it myself. There's curb repairs and a final lift of asphalt to go into Casella 1, and that will be done. You asked a timeframe. I don't have a timeframe, but it will be done probably before Christmas. Not to say that's a date certain, but one, we wanted to make sure all the build, heavy building construction was done, and that's virtually done now. And plus, you typically want to do these repaving repair jobs when you don't expect to have rains every afternoon. So that's sort of the general timeframe we're talking about on Casella 1. Was there another question you maybe wanted me to look to, to address?
Anybody else?
One thing I wanted to comment on, though, is on the changing bond amount. I think I've expressed to you that you already have a bond in place that covers all the infrastructure that the district would be accepting. And typically, once you've accepted it to be certified complete, then it's reduced to 10%. But you continue to hold that bond in place for three years. I feel comfortable that if there is damage to the facilities during that period of time while you're holding the bond, be it more cracked curb or some failure in the system that it's been damaged by or not delivered in an acceptable condition, you're going to call us up and say, this needs to be fixed before you're going to release that bond. So I think, you know, again, it's, you know, in our position that the 10% bond is a certain level of security that you should be, feel comfortable with. It's not an insignificant amount of money that we're talking about to cover these kind of repairs that we would be obligated to fix and repair before you're going to release that bond. So whether you call it, well, you want the 10%, up to 15%, that's certainly your prerogative, but right now, that's not part of your permit criteria manual. So again, it's one of those, if you want to change the rules, I think you need to change the rules in accordance with, you know, governmental requirements, administrative changes or whatever.
Yeah, but David, don't, don't, I mean, don't you think it's also not within, you know, regulations for contractors to, you know, to pop tops and funnel water?
Those, you know, I'm as alarmed as you are, and I.
And I know, you're not there. You don't want that stuff to happen.
I want to know an address so we can go back to who we know was working in that area. And I'm, you know, not that we're going to get Company A to fess up to it. What I want to have our homebuilding people understand is, there are contractors out there that cause damage to facilities that the district owns.
Yeah.
Or that we're trying to turn over to the district, and that works against all parties here.
Yeah. And my only point was, an increase in that bond amount, I think under normal situations would, would, would be acceptable. However, what we've seen, and Chris may be able to speak to it more, is that we're having to go back and, and, and spend more money on our dime to, to address these issues. And, you know, I know if, if you had more oversight, you would be able to catch some of these things as they were in action. And maybe that's an action on your part, is to enhance, you know, your, your accountability and oversight. You know, I think the bond increase is just to, from what I'm hearing, is to give us a little bit more comfort level.
Sure.
In, in evaluating the risk and liability on, on our end.
Well.
Trying to meet you in the middle somewhere.
And maybe Chris needs to answer the question, but, you know, I think Lennar, WCI previously, has always been comfortable. If you know we've damaged a meter box, a meter cover, some facility owned by the district that you're going to incur cost to fix because it's yours, you know, I don't know why we're not getting some kind of information back from Chris's office saying, we had to spend $1,500 replacing a meter box at this address. It was crushed by, before the house was sealed. You know, we're big boys. We're, we know things are going to get damaged. That's, that's not a secret. What we want you to know is, if we've damaged something through our contractor operations out there, we're, we want you to let us know, and we want you to charge us for it. That's, that's a legitimate charge on your part, and we should pay for it. So I don't want the district to incur cost for things we've damaged or not given to you in an acceptable condition. That's, that's not the way the game should be played.
And the only other item that, that I'll just bring back up is that, is the flowway. I think we've gone kind of back and forth on that.
Sure.
And basically, you develop one side, develop the other, and there's a sandbar in the middle as a result. And, and ultimately, we're going to, again, we're going to have to incur the cost to go in and fix that, so we don't have, you know, issues. And it may be an issue three years down the road, but again.
To bring you up to speed on that, again, we had a meeting, Danny and I, Mike and Chris met with South Florida Water Management District, and they categorically indicated they are not going to do anything to us on the grounds of that sandbar. It doesn't come into play.
If it's not there, the order would be there.
I'm sorry.
Just waste some water.
Well, their, their deal is that evidently the sizing of it is greater than that that's necessary. I mean, we made it perfectly clear to them to make sure that they had done the calculations and hadn't missed it, or hadn't seen it, or hadn't observed it. And they indicated that they're not going to let that get in the way of it.
But.
Because they've issued, they've issued their approval.
If you have an obstacle in the middle of a flowway, it's going to, at some point, divert water, which will.
The, the big.
Erosion, and there's, there's.
There's only one issue that they brought up, and they made certainly to us that they weren't going to get involved in it, and that was aesthetics. If that thing is exposed in the dry time, in the winter.
Then it is.
They could care less about the aesthetics. They're not going to get involved in that.
Do we have this in writing from them, that they think that that's perfectly acceptable?
Well, we had four of us sit there and listen to them.
No, I mean, do we have it in writing that that's perfectly acceptable?
They've approved it. They've approved it. Yes, we have it in writing. They've approved it.
Madam Chair, just briefly, one thing too, with regards to the 10% bond, and I could be corrected by Danny, David, or Chris, or anyone. That typically, that's to ensure that the infrastructure that was installed, if we find any defects in, as installed and as constructed, we'll take care of that. It's not generally, to my knowledge, intended to provide a source of money to remediate damages caused by vertical construction occurring after the infrastructure is in place. That's my understanding. I could be wrong. And I think that's where, where the rub is, there's been an extraordinary amount of damage to the infrastructure. If you're a county, I think the counties typically will withhold COs until the county road belly gutter system is repaired. We don't have that ability. That's, and I could be corrected. Dan, disagree or not, or?
I agree.
Okay. And I don't know if Chris agrees or not, but I think we, Chris has mentioned that before. I think that's part of the issue. You know, and the county won't cooperate and refuse, or a city, in saying, we're not going to issue COs until you fix the belly gutter. That's a fundamental issue.
Another issue, another weapon you have that you can use.
Well, they won't, the city and county don't cooperate. They won't not, they will not stop issuing the COs if there's damage to infrastructure.
They.
They will not.
Not for the city and county.
So in other words, they ignore you.
Absolutely. That's been my experience with the city and the county on permits.
Did the design drawings of the flowway expansion show the island?
The design drawings? You mean the record drawings?
Whatever, when they came down from the west.
I, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the record drawings.
I mean, just go on either side.
Yeah. But South Florida was 100% familiar with the issue. I mean, that was, that was our whole purpose, is to make sure you approved this, were you told about all this. And it was perfectly clear. They understood about it and had done the calculations, and it wasn't an issue. But they would not acknowledge that it wasn't an aesthetic issue. Instead, they just won't participate in that.
I'd like to get something in writing for them that that's perfectly acceptable.
You've got it, Margaret. They approved it. They approved it.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
I'm concerned with the flooding, if there will be flooding in the future. I mean, are you going to be adjusting that at Pelican Preserve or what? I'm, I'm concerned.
Well, if you're speaking to the event of this, I guess now has a no-name storm, that's the second one to hit Southwest Florida, but nevertheless, you know, when, I think as your engineer has already expressed, drainage systems and communities are designed to certain standards, storm events. So if, if the systems are designed to a certain storm event, constructed to a certain storm event, and being maintained, if the storms are less than the storm events, it's not going to be a problem. If, if it's, if it exceeds those storm events, then you are going to see a noticeable rising of water, storm waters. And if you want to call it flooding, so be it. But the point is, the systems are only designed to accommodate so much water in a particular period of time.
So I'm thinking maybe that we should redesign so that it should be, we should be more proactive in case something happens, because.
Can't afford it.
We don't, we don't know what the future brings, and there's always that possibility that we will get an increase in rain because quote-unquote of what they say is climate change. So I'm thinking maybe that should be put into the design? This is just a question.
I understand. But, you know, actually, maybe in the next master plan community, we'll give that some thought. But Pelican Preserve and Gateway are literally built out, 100% permitted, and all designed to standards promulgated by South Florida Water Management District, Lee County, City of Fort Myers, and your own permit criteria manual. So if all of those entities change the criteria, then obviously developers, builders are going to have to accommodate that. But to your immediate concern, there's no ability to redesign the system, because it's already in the ground, designed to meet the standards that were promulgated, you know, many years ago. It's just that you, the system is designed to handle the design amount of water that the agencies felt was appropriate at the time. Now, if you want to get into the higher level of climate change and all of that, the weather's going to be worse. I can't deal with that.
There's no way to amend any of this?
It's, that's.
I'm just.
Very difficult. It's not the standard of the industry. That's the problem.
I'm not, you know, obviously, but then you're starting to throw huge sums of money to rebuild drainage systems, and it's not what we are capable of dealing with in this meeting or in this near term.
David, is Casella 2, we know there's nothing vertical started there yet, but have we, is it practical, or is it, not practical, not the right word, is it the standard that we have done in the past? And maybe I should be asking Danny. Before we would accept that, Casella 1, I think we got an answer. Casella 2, is it typical that there is a punch list and as builds, and what's the word I want, everything but final lift brought up to speed before, let's say, a Casella 2 is, is approved to reduce that or to take it to that 10% bond? My question is, are we there? Have we done all those things?
Well, from a historic perspective, you've done it before. You weren't on the board. I don't think any of you were board members. But back in the 2003, '04, '05 timeframe, the original sections of Pelican Preserve, many of those neighborhoods were only partially built. The asphalt was only the first lift of asphalt, and the district accepted the infrastructure at that time. So.
Well, I guess.
In those cases, the infra, you know, you own the infrastructure, the, the roads, the, the drainage, the utilities, well, excuse me, not the utilities, I would say, Fort Myers. But so, but the vertical was not at 90% or 100%. In many neighborhoods, it was very low percentage.
Now, in Casella 2, we've already accepted the water sewer and irrigation, correct?
Correct.
We've accepted those.
Casella, you, you, the water and sewer system is yours, yes.
I'm sorry.
The water and sewer system in Casella 1 and 2 is.
Not irrigation, but the potable wastewater.
Yeah, that's why I was getting, I was trying to differentiate the drainage versus the, so the only thing that's not accepted at this point in time in Casella 2 is the, the drainage component.
And the road.
The drainage and the road.
Which is inclusive of the road.
Yeah.
Is it typical, that's where I'm going backwards, I guess, is it typical that we would accept and fall under that 10% coverage, everything having been punch listed and videoed and as-built and all that, without the one-inch lift? And that's it. Is that standard?
Yes, sir.
Are we asking for something different than we have asked before?
In the case of Casella specifically, let's say a normal, I want to use a math model here for making it more clear. The final lift of asphalt's not down. Let's, let's assume a normal 10% bond for Casella would leave the district with a $100,000 bond. But it doesn't have the final lift of asphalt. That final lift of asphalt, pick a number, is $25,000. And maybe curb repairs is another $15,000. Just pick numbers. So you're at, what, what's that, $40,000 of additional cost. So in my view, the district would say that bond would be reduced to no, a number not lower than $140,000. See, the original 10% was 100, and then you've got another 40 for the missing components.
But, but my point was, is that when I was getting to it, I think I heard it affirmatively. The as-builds are done. We know it was built in accordance with the design. We know it was cleaned, and it's properly operating. The only thing we don't have is we don't have the vertical construction, which would tap into it to be able to operate it in this particular case.
Well, you also apparently have a punch list of whether 60-some items that I, you know, I don't know if that's being worked on or whatever.
What I was getting to is that punch list done, I'm trying to bait you. Is a punch list done before we accept it, or is it deferred until we're 100% complete? That's my question.
Well, I think.
I don't know the answer to that one.
I think Lennar was bringing you, or asking your acceptance of Casella 1 and 2, believing it was in a form that's acceptable to you, with not, I don't. I don't know that we have a letter from your engineer and staff that says the infrastructure is 100% complete, or do I still have a letter from you saying, "No, there's a punch list of 62 items," or whatever it is? So, I... Rephrased it again. I thought we were giving you a package that was 100% ready for your acceptance. If it's not ready because you have a punch list, then I guess we have, to meet your requirement that it is 100% ready, we have something to review with you.
Well, I'm trying to take this vertical construction out of the picture, but...
Less the vertical construction, correct?
In the case of Casella 1 and 2, they are different. One is essentially done, and we can accept that, and the permit criteria manual makes it clear that the punch list items and all that is complete.
Right.
And it's fully complete.
Yeah.
Which would mean the 1-inch lift and everything else, cracks repaired and all that. Put Casella 1 over on its side. I don't have a problem with that. I think we can work it out. Casella 2 is the one I'm asking. If we've got the as-builds, we know that the storm sewer that we're accepting is built to grade and all the other, you know, things that were done, and the only thing that's missing is the 1-inch lift, then I can go along with what Chris was saying is a way of going it. And if you guys are willing to take, and we find obscene costs that we're incurring because of, let's say, subs not doing their job, we pass it on to you guys, and you guys come out and take care of it, I can live with that.
Ed, is that... I'm not sure that was a statement or a question. Back to me.
That was a statement.
Okay.
Oh, excellent. Chris, I... My concern with this, in Casella 1, we get the curbs fixed and we get the final lift on it. I don't have a problem taking that. But with Casella 2, is this 10% bond... I'm assuming one bond covers Casella 1 and 2. So, the 10% would be to cover any deficiencies we find in two communities, and one of them isn't even... Hasn't even started being built yet.
The problem we commented, it makes it more difficult because when WCI first submitted that term, remember, it was back in December?
Mm-hmm.
You know, they had a punch list. We finished the punch list. Well, now, we're bringing it up in August, and obviously, there's been a lot of damage done by the vertical construction.
Right.
So, that makes it problematic because our last walkthrough was only a couple of weeks ago when we found all this. You know, looking at it in that situation. So, that makes it hard, that time lag that there.
And I have trouble, and I have concerns with that, too, because we... They fix... They fix everything in Casella 1, and we agree to take Casella 1 and 2. Like I said, we know there's going to be damage. There's no way you can do vertical construction out there without damaging the infrastructure. And I'm even thinking about... You were talking about the utility boxes and things. I know. I knew. The final lift in Stony Brook, there was curbing that was cracked and damaged. That didn't get fixed at final lift. The boxes, the utility boxes, that got run over by big trucks bringing in trusses and heavy trucks of roof tiles that crushed things, they never got fixed. It fell on the CDD to take care of that. We still have cracked curbs in Stony Brook that Lenar never came back and fixed. You can see because the final lift asphalt went into the cracks of the curbing. So, it's obvious they weren't fixed, and they were there when the final lift happened.
But, Margaret, the problem with that is we didn't do our job here by enforcing the bond.
And that...
We just kept our eyes closed. We looked the other way. And my... I'm saying is that if everybody follows the rules, this isn't a problem. It's when you go to sleep at the switch... And Stony Brook, I totally agree with you on the mess you got up there. This board fell asleep at the switch and looked the other way and allowed everything to happen at Stony Brook. And that's partly our fault.
And that's the point I'm making, Ed. Sitting out there for years, you said, "We cannot continue doing business as usual and just letting the developers do whatever they want." And now, you're saying you're changing your mind.
I'm saying I'm on this board, and they... I'm going to activate... No, I didn't change my mind. I'm going to activate the bonds. That's my gun that I got to fire. When you sit there and let a bond expire, and you didn't do anything, and you know something's wrong, shame on us.
Well, we also have staff.
Shame on us.
And we've got staff checking up on...
We've got a good staff now, so...
So, there's a lot of things that are... I mean, the one thing I'll go back to is, you know, I see both sides of this, and I want us to maintain a good partnership with WCI.
Right.
And I think we need to continue doing things the right way. And I do want to follow the permit criteria. I'm in agreement with increasing the bond amount. But again, a prime example is this flowway. Construction was done. We have this sandbar in the middle, and no one wants to be accountable for it. I mean, even the southwest water manager says, "No, no, it's okay." And we've gone back and forth. And again, we're going to have to eat that. I mean, I would just, for once, like for someone to step up and say, "Okay, this is not the way it should have been done. Fix it." And then, you know, it might make it a little easier for us to say, "We'll, you know, we want to continue with this partnership and move forward. We'll stick to our letter of the law and be held accountable and not deviate as long as your construction is doing the same thing." And that's what I'll say about it.
From an engineering perspective of doing this stuff, you show me a way that we can do that, and you got my attention, but I don't see anything that allows us to do that.
Tony, can we can accept it?
I guess the question is, the plans that were approved by this district for the flowway, did it provide that at completion, there'd be a sandbar in the middle?
Didn't show.
Didn't show. That's the problem.
The side was just left in the middle.
Did not show it.
It was left in the middle as well?
Yeah, a cross-section to go all the way across the flowway.
They came to this like this and left the middle.
To get the drainage. And if I may, one other statement about this, too. It becomes difficult because in the permit criteria manual, you can only build a developer for inspection services until it's turned over. So, if you accept it now, and that's why a lot of that wasn't inspected, and they're out there building vertical, you will get no reimbursement for inspecting that while it's underway. And here's Casella today. This was a connection that had a nipple and a fitting on it so they could draw water out of it for construction. And the last week, we found four straight pipes and meter installations that no meter in there, and they needed water, so they went and piped the no-backflow and just piped the water.
I mean, that's stuff that Dave's getting...
We need to...
They have to be aware of and be accountable.
PD and SO, that's criminal.
But then, you know, so you aren't getting any money for inspection.
Trouble damages.
If you don't have trouble inspecting it, then just let the board know that...
We're going to incur costs.
To go out there and inspect during the vertical construction.
I mean, we're spending money for accountability, Dave, that, I mean, that falls within your jurisdiction.
Yeah. I mean, the subs... Who's watching your subs? They shouldn't be allowed to do this stuff.
They're not allowed to do that.
Well, how are they doing it, then?
Well, I'm... It's not like someone in the corporate offices say, "Go forth and do this." It's the contractors, unfortunately, do it, and by the time you either spot it, you can spot it, or whatever, it's a done deal. It's not acceptable. I will tell you, it is not acceptable to the company, Lenar, or WCI.
Jolly does a good job out there. I mean, we let him know and send him the photographs, all his up on it.
Okay.
It... But, you know, you've got hundreds of contractors out there who have... You know, if they think they can get away with some, they get away with it.
That's my experience.
And you can beat them up, you know, this guy up today, and then, you know, the next guy ignores it and does it, too. I... I'm not trying to apologize in any form. I wish I could catch these people and make the... Financially painful for them, but it's not an easy thing to do because you don't have a name, you don't have a license plate. It's a... You know, it happens with no knowledge.
Yeah, and I think that's... I mean, Dave, I don't think anyone would accuse you or even WCI out of the top to, you know, that this is not an issue or that you, you know, that you don't want to enforce it. The other side is, we have to incur these costs. We have to have staff going out there.
What I... You know, Chris is saying is, he doesn't think he has the right, under the permit criteria manual, to bill the builder, the developer, for this...
Inspection.
This inspection and/or the repair or whatever. I'm surprised if that's the exact wording and he's interpreting it correct. I'm not trying to be argumentative. What I think is, I want the district to charge us for those kind of things because we... We're creating the problem for you, and that's not what we want to do. It's a hard thing to control, but we have to own up to the problems we create.
Thank you for that.
Does the bond prohibit that, David?
Well, I don't know that the bond does you any good, per se. I think if, you know, Chris's team spends X dollars fixing a this or that, it ought to be a direct invoice, and we ought to be paying for that. I don't know that you're going to...
Yeah, usually, the bonds are dependent upon performance with the conditions or the approvals.
Right.
As opposed...
So, the deal is, if nothing happens at the end of the period, and the repairs aren't made, we exercise the bond to repair... Make the repairs. We're talking improvements, repair of improvements, as opposed to O and M.
The only thing I...
Or additional O and M.
The only thing I... You don't have it here. Maybe you do. It's in some locales. I know there are cash bonds that are posted with the local municipality or whatever, and it is, you know, if they have certain costs, they will take that cost out of the bond before they return it to you.
So, I guess my question is, is this something that we're going to bring back? Or is this actionable today? Or are we waiting for a final lift? What direction are we going now?
Well, my thought was, is that Casella 1, again, separating it out and as being approvable, get Casella 1. Is there anything other than what you indicated was a weather to finish Casella 1?
Yeah, basically the...
That's it.
The time to allow us to do the repairs and the paving, and typically, we wouldn't do that. It could almost happen anytime from now through December.
And let's just so that everybody's on the same page. You not being able to have Casella 1 accepted, what does that mean to WCI, Lenar? What's the reality of that?
Well, the acceptance of the infrastructure is... If we don't have certainty that we know what the parameters are on acceptance and the timeframe for such, then we incur the liability as well as the expense for related operations or maintenance of that system, whatever it might be. Not that it's tremendous amount, but if includes things like utilities for street lighting or landscape maintenance, that kind of thing. You know, it... Then, there's a monthly cost of doing that.
But is it not typical that when we approve that, that we could have, as a condition of the approval, a list of the punch list items that have to be done to facilitate this, knowing that we have access to that 10% bond to do it if it's not done? No, my point is, is what's to keep...
Can we do it with conditions?
Yeah. Do it with conditions, but what's to keep, let's say, WCI, Lenar, from just saying, "Well, maybe in 2018, 2019, we'll get to that." What keeps you under the fire to address those punch list items if we don't get them done immediately, before we make the approval?
It's in our best interest to get those repairs done as quickly as possible. We've, you know, we were hopeful that this would have been, you know, six months ago, back in December.
Understand.
When it was originally submitted. But the... Yes, if there's a punch list of items and they're all doable, you know, we would address them as quickly as we can, get it re-inspected, and do the acceptance of this district.
And we may need to look at the bond itself to make sure that this type of activity... Because if the damage is caused by vertical construction as opposed to defect in the original construction, don't want to have the surety, the bonding agency saying, "Oh, it wasn't within the scope of the original bonds." We would need to double-check that also to make sure.
So, what you're saying is, you're two options. You have to complete the punch list before we approve, or we approve with conditions that the punch list be completed as part of the condition.
And double-check the bond to make sure the bond was covered.
If the bond covers that, I could go that second round.
And I got one final question. It's not for Dave. It's for either Danny or Chris. This flowway, do we have any idea what it would cost to get that flowway fixed, to remove that sandbar in the middle and get that... Any idea?
300 yards, 20 seconds to a calculation.
And I think it's more than just a sandbar. I think it's a rock ridge.
Yeah, and just to clarify and to comment on one of the things that Mr. Tinkelman mentioned is, the Water Management District has indicated that, you know, they're not going to hold us liable of aesthetics, that sort of thing. But that still doesn't take away from the fact that it's still going to be a headache and a maintenance issue, and you could... You're going to have... It's going to be a point of buildup for...
Silk now.
Yes, and then, as well as a place where you're going to have vegetation growing that Gateway, I think, will, regardless of what the Water Management District requires it, you're going to find yourself in a maintenance situation. So, two comments to that. One option would be to remove it. The other would be to have ongoing, you know, maintenance associated with it. You know, best thing long-term is to get rid of the thing. So, as far as that costs, I would be venturing a guess at this point because you're talking about not only, you know, sealed in dirt, you're talking about riprap that's in there. And now...
You've got riprap over...
It was part of the bank.
Part of the embankment.
It was part of the bank.
You've got about 5,000 cubic yards.
So, then the question is, how do you do it? You know, do you do it from the bank on the side where construction hasn't...
Closest side.
You know, where you're still doing construction? Do you wait till the dry season and block part of that off and, you know, and bring a piece of equipment in? So, yeah, I would be throwing out a number at this point, $20,000, $25,000, 50, but I'd be throwing out a number.
Absolute swag.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just... Just on a side note on this, I always... South Florida Water Management, you know, I think we need to maybe lean on them a little bit on this, that they're allowing, that they're saying that this is okay. Because with the outflow through the FPL easement from Stony Brook, that was never permitted. It isn't built to how it was designed. South Florida Manu... Water Management said, "It seems to be flowing properly, so we're okay with it."
Well, I think that's definitely a fine after the...
Well, and Ed...
But it needs to be addressed, I agree.
But I think this is... I'm not talking about our flowway. I'm talking about this. We have an opportunity to say, "This has to be fixed." I mean, we can't go back and make them fix anything that has been not done properly in the past. But we have the ability to not allow these things to continue happening going forward. That's my point.
Well, I think to address that, for the record, too, is I don't think you're going to get anything different from the Water Management District. They've provided their acceptance. And the meeting that we had, which Ed followed up with an email that, you know, went to everybody at that, which essentially would be the meeting minutes summarizing that meeting and their position, was that from what the engineers submitted for the Karina and the Casella sides, is that what was excavated actually increases your ability to move water. So, from a, you know, a engineering standpoint, they've got no issue with that being there. So, I think from, you know, the email of that, I mean, I would not anticipate they would ever give us anything in writing, but essentially, that was part of why we had that meeting, was to get that out of it. Ed followed up with the email.
It's not been sent yet.
Okay.
Waiting on this decision.
Okay. So, we have an email that could we go... Which essentially summarizes that meeting, which, whether they acknowledge it or not, even being silent, I think would be acknowledgement that they agreed with it, so...
The, the bigger problem is, and Kathy was referring to it earlier, is we're not following that manual. That manual makes it perfectly clear that a certification request from the developer and/or his engineer is specifically, specifically told not to go to any agency until we are informed first. And this wouldn't have happened. This wouldn't have happened. But it's not only on this one, it's been on other ones around here. These guys bypass us like we're setting still. We sat over at Hampton Park and watched them do it. They know they went to South Florida, they went to the county. And both of them came back and approved it. The only reason they're spinning their wheels right now is they found out they weren't quite told the truth. The issue is, we need to be more enforceful that when you get to this point, you don't send your engineer down there to send in a request for a certification that we haven't even seen.
When do you start to do that?
We're, huh?
Yeah.
When do we start to do that? I mean, that's where we're on the fence. Do we, do we hold them accountable now and not approve Casella 2?
It's kind of water over the dam at this point in time because it's an issue that they have approved it and they indicated it's not a problem. That's what I was hoping that we would find out, that it was a problem either hydraulically or something like that. But they said that's not an issue. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Bob's chomping.
Yeah.
Oh, I have been chomping. Bob Geppert for the record, Pelican, Missouri. In no particular order. First of all, I think Pelican or P-PAC at a minimum repawns should have been involved in the meeting that Ed and Danny had with South Florida. This is our baby, our baby's ugly. We would like to be represented. So I'm disappointed that we weren't. I thought we did a better job of communicating. Secondly, we talked about how buildings and, and areas were transferred, neighborhoods were transferred over in the past. And I'm kind of glad that that came up because it's exactly doing business like we did in the past that got Pelican in such trouble in the 2008 timeframe, 2009, 2010. We spent, and this board approved, hundreds, hundreds of thousands, probably millions that I can document fixing deficiencies in the system that had been certified by some engineering firm to WCI. WCI said, this is a beautiful baby, but the baby had leprosy. And by the time we discovered that, everybody was long gone. And we spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars fixing it. I find it particularly interesting, and I don't want to, you know, be negative because WCI has been very supportive in most of our activities. But if they're willing to pay for those inspections, I've still got every inspection fee that we paid from 2008 to today. And believe me, that is a chunk of change. And I will be happy to coalesce that and submit it. So if, you know, if they want to pay that, I'm, I'm all for it, we can use the money. I view, we are much more involved in the Casella system now than we ever were would happen in the past. But it's exactly because we got burned in the past that we are so involved now. So I completely support Casella 1 coming if the punch list has worked. But I don't think we should touch Casella 2 until they reach a point where we can at least see what they've done to our system. So thank you for that.
So again, I ask, where are we headed with this? Are we bringing it back in a couple of weeks after we get more information?
What more information are we gonna get?
Well, one thing is, are they going to up the, the bond?
Well, let's...
The only, only thing I think that Tony brought up, that I do believe we need an answer, is can we get that bond to be used for what he made reference to? As, as far as a construction defect?
We're talking Casella 1, correct?
Either or, either or.
I think there's a difference between the two.
Is there two different bonds or one bond for both?
That's one bond.
Well, they were wanting one bond to do them both together. But I don't know why we couldn't approve and separate those separately. I think that his, Tony's question he raised was, can defects caused after the fact be an instrument of the bond? That, that is a legitimate question. Because if it cannot be, we're back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
If it can be, then we have a way out.
So we want to, and Ed, when you send that email of the minutes from your meeting with South Florida Water Management District and Tetra Tech, can you please forward that to all the board members?
Well, I would suggest that Chris do that.
Send it to Chris. Sorry, sorry, everyone.
What I want to make sure is I don't say something to them that comes back and we turn around and do something contrary to it, it'll go look pretty stupid. So I want to make sure that we're, we're following what we discussed with them.
But I, I think that all of the board members should read what was considered the minutes of that meeting, since we weren't there at it, please. So we, we gonna continue this to, on the agenda two weeks from now?
We're meeting next week, so alls we need to do is call the bonded company and verify that question.
You could continue this item to, when you continue the meeting to next week to discuss, well, the meetings continue generally. Primarily for the Girl Scout, but this can be an item too, it can be an item to be continued to the next meeting.
Will that give you enough time?
Yes.
Okay.
Absent Irma, she's made a little westward shift.
I know, I was gonna say...
Absent something else coming from Irma, because the new track has shifted westward.
That's what my husband was calling me about. He said that it has shifted more to the center of the state.
About 30, 40 miles west, yeah.
My, my thing is, I want to get this behind us. I'm tired of kicking this can down the road. This is ridiculous.
So David, we'll bring this back at the next meeting, which I believe will be next Wednesday, but we'll vote on that here in just a little bit. P-PAC, I'm gonna move on to P-PAC, because, I'm sorry, Mrs. Flaherty.
We'll get it.
Could I just ask Mr. Colwell one question?
One question.
Okay. There are big, big pieces of equipment that I've seen going down Gateway and Pelican. Are you going to be securing those equipment before the hurricane comes? I see big, I'm, big, big equipment. I can see them on the street.
Well, are these things like trucks or whatever? Or are you, do you mean like materials, like...
Oh, I'm talking about trucks and big equipment.
Like...
Yeah, I'm not worried about the trucks, it's those roof tiles, huh?
Yeah.
But this, these are things that have, that are attached to other things that I saw.
What I was informed by our, our division president, who disseminated certain information to all the people in our company, was that there's a protocol for Lennar to secure the job sites so, so that in events of hurricanes, not necessarily just Irma, all hurricanes, they have a protocol to follow of securing the job sites. Trying to get, you know, dumpsters removed, roofing materials secure, you know, loose materials picked up, secured, whatever. You know, it's no advantage to us to have valuable materials blowing around a job site. And plus, it can cause damage to other property. So there is a protocol for them to follow and they're supposed to have it in place by Saturday. Now, the other thing is, we got special dispensation from, I don't know what regulatory agency, whether it's the state or whatever, but the, the agency that regulates the stormwater pest management practices, that's where you see the silt screens around properties, the black fence, the, the filtration fabric that's put on inlets. We got dispensation that we could pull the filter fabric from the inlets to allow for extra drainage or increased rate of drainage. It causes other problems because they silt up, but it will allow, at least for the time being, for that drain to flow more freely.
David, could you provide that to the districts where we have it on file so that when we have the inspection for the acceptance, we'll know to double check for silt?
Well, you got, if they record these minutes, you'll have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I may also, I'm in touch with Mr. Jolly and just to address the concerns of one of the audience members about the roof tiles and he responded to that they've been in prep mode for three days. They've been securing, have secured the roof tiles, trash and construction materials thrown away or stored, empty the dumpsters and empty the portlets, securing anything loose.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, they're supposed to put their portlets on their side so they don't, but that's minor. There was a question, if I could address a question that came up earlier from Mr. Tinkle. When Johnson Engineering master planned the drainage system for all of Gateway, there was a modeling done, you know, that was standard practice, both for South Florida Water Management District approvals and whatever. So they have the modeling, you know, whether it's still adequate and, you know, that was probably done with, almost before the time of computers.
I know. But do, do you guys have a copy of it?
If we have, it's long gone.
So my best bet is I can't call Johnson, we don't see eye to eye on stuff. Maybe, Chris, you can give Johnson a call, see if we get a copy.
David, wouldn't it be...
Well, South Florida Water Management District has a copy.
I went on their site, could not find anything.
I'll, I have a bunch of stuff that I'll, I'll look to see if I have anything that looks like, a whole bunch of numbers that I can understand.
You're talking 84, 85 era.
Yeah.
Yeah. I couldn't, I went back to the very beginning and couldn't find it.
85, the 85 permit?
I went to the beginning.
How'd you do engineering back in the old days?
Slide rule.
Slide rule. And it worked, it got us to the moon.
And not, not to belabor a point on having controllable weir structures because you have it in Basin 5 and 4. There was a hurricane that was going to hit the Lee County area, I'll say, back in the early 90s. And at that time, the district actually did get permission to open the, and there was basically just Basin 5. There was nothing really built out in 4 and further north. So we got permission to open the valve and lower the water levels in Basin 5 because it was rainy season, it was above stage. And the hurricane, it may have come, but it never produced any rainfall. So unfortunately, the lakes were now two, two feet below control. We did such an ineffective job of lowering the water. So it can sometimes backfire on you.
Well, the, the thing is, is that the way we, it was common up north. We did this all the time.
I understand.
And you have somebody that has responsibility for the, what we call the wheel.
Understand.
And when you get done lowering or raising the wheel, you take the wheel off so nobody else can play with it.
Well, the district had control of the wheel. And the point is, you know, and we used it thinking it was a good preventative measure because we had a hurricane on the horizon. It just didn't, no rain to...
Well, the, the issue is, the technology is there now that can solve this problem. We just need to convince them to do it.
No, I think it makes sense if you can get it.
Thank you, David. P-PAC, you're up.
Nothing to add, oh, okay, it was Tori, Bob. Bob Geppert for the record, nothing to add to the report that we have given to you except to let you know that our pond maintenance supplier, which was Lakes and Wetlands, has not been performing to expectations. We gave them 30 days until the 1st of September to address some of the items. I've been working with, through Chris, and we finally decided that we are going to terminate that relationship. We solicited a bid from the prior supplier. We're gonna go month to month for at least six months till things settle down and then we'll probably go out for another bid.
Hey, Bob, can I ask you a question on that? What, what maintenance or, what do they, what do they do?
What, what does the guy, well, we, on a typical pond, they have to do water treatments where they take samples, et cetera, and send them out. They also treat the hydrola and lenofla as needed.
Yeah.
They have to maintain the aquatic growth around the pond. And we have varying standards depending on how high the water is. But we don't allow the latorals to grow too far into the pond because we have many shallow ponds. So we keep it in a manageable band.
And how much you spend annually on that?
Uh, $75,000.
Why can we not, can we not hire someone internally to do this? To do complete pond maintenance treatments?
There are two contractors right now that it's kind of separated, does the wetlands and what does the pond?
Yeah.
I mean, between what we spend...
He's talking about an employee.
I'm talking a district employee. Between what, what you spend and, and we spend and, and other communities.
Yeah, I don't know what they're costing.
We can hire our own team internally.
That's what Joe Cerbo is talking about.
And we also have areas where...
We might get there one day.
Okay.
We have areas where we allow fishing behind residence homes. So they've got to keep a master list, which we constantly, you know...
I was just curious.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of areas.
Well, David, or...
It seems like it's kind of hard to find something good.
It is, it's very hard.
I've got a question for you. You've seen this document. This is the RWA report on the tree line crossing. You got that one?
I, I do have it, yeah.
You're, you're aware of it?
Yes.
This was before your time. This, I, I'm guessing. David, why did WCI ask for this report? This is a, well, my copy says dated April 2014. Why would there have been a question? I've got method in my madness here. Why was a request for a design of a road that was done by a totally different engineer and gone through by South Florida Water Management District, God only knows who else, to approve it? What caused WCI to spend the money to challenge or check the design?
Uh, good question. And the, if I recall right, what we had to do at the time, the timeframe this was done, 2014, WCI was in, I believe, a notice proposed change with the city of Fort Myers to either annex in the areas that might have been the 217 acres related to Prado Pestoia. That's what I'm thinking, the timeframe. There were issues that came up from the Pelican Preserve Alliance as to certain, you know, you can't add the 217 acres because the drainage system is inadequate, so forth and so on. They had concerns, they were going to take it to the city council. And I think we were trying to address proactively before the hearing, some of the issues that they were raising. And that, this may have been one of the issues.
That's my record.
My, my question where I was coming from, and I've, I've got to reread this thing, but as I read this, it looked like to me, and I'm using my words, that somebody was concerned that there was a limitation, a head limitation caused by those two design box culverts that, and as I read this, and we were talking about it the other day, David, or Bob, the elevation, the restriction at 247 CFS puts the water level, what I call backwater curve, going back to weir 2, above the elevation of weir 2. I have never, ever, ever seen anybody would do something like that. In other words, I'm sending our design criteria here, 247 CFS, and I believe that to be correct. That's about the acreage times the 34 per square mile, whatever. To me, that bridge should have never caused any change in the flow profile to create a backwater curve. I thought that's what somebody was on, was thinking about at WCI that led to this. In other words, if that bridge is, if we needed one more box culvert and we brought that down to where it did not create a restriction at 247 CFS, I'd say everything's hunky dory. So we could meet a 25-year flood and, or rain event, no problem. As I read this thing, it causes a backup to over 21 feet. How the hell is this system supposed to work?
Uh, well, I'm not...
Everybody seemed to accept this as like, it's all hunky dory. Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it sure as hell doesn't look hunky dory to me. It looks like it's an obstacle.
I'm not prepared to answer your question in that regard. You asked the question, why was it done? I think it was in relation to concerns raised by the Alliance related to the NOPs.
But my point was, WCI had nothing to do asking. WCI, did WCI have anything to do with the design of the tree line road and cover?
No, no.
So that was the county.
Yeah, in my recollection, that is also similar to...
It was actually done by Worthington as part of their, their DRI process to do what became plantation and whatever.
In my recollection was, there was a concern about backup, I'll call it, non-technical break, in that the sizing of the pipe was inappropriate by, was raised by the district and the residents of Pelican Reserve at the time. And, and Lee County, whether Worthington built it for Lee County and get impact fee credits or whether it was an obligation of development, that was one of the questions. But I mean, I think that's probably why this was done because I recall there was an issue about where they sized properly.
But my question was...
That's the 2014 timeframe you're talking about?
I believe so.
That bridge was later, a long time before that.
But go back, go back even farther?
To 2011.
When the, when, you guys had an easement all the way past that, okay? And when the county wanted the right-of-way for tree line, there were issues that came up, there were discussions. I'm sure Tony was in, into the midst of it. I, I know I was. But the point was, between Worthington, the county, the GSD, and WCI, and probably some other people, there were issues that came up at the time that bridge was even under consideration. It hadn't even been built yet.
And there are some agreements regarding that, too.
You see where I'm going. If I've got 247 CFS going over weir 2, and we know 247 going over weir 2 is 20.125 elevation, I'm sorry, 2.125 above elevation 20, 25 inches, how could that bridge be designed to cause a backwater curve on that? Never, ever in my life heard of that being allowed, never. Never.
Talk to South Florida Water Management.
Right.
I was trying to get out of them, I was trying to get out of him and he wasn't going there, that they had done an engineering check and had the same concern and wanted to authenticate it.
Only that report that we hear.
I smell a...
Anything else, sir?
One of those little whiskering deals with a long tail.
I'll go retrieve some of the agreement, I'll go back and look at those agreements because there were some agreements at the time.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to supervisor comments and I'll start down here with Mrs. Flaherty. I do not have any, Mr. Banks.
Hey, Chris, with the one construction that, with the, the new daycare, are we, are we in communication with them as far as making sure they're locking everything down? I, I saw some activity, but...
Oh, they got stuff over there laying and...
They've got their scaffold just basically all stacked up on the...
They build a 20-foot-high wall today, that thing if the wind comes, it's gonna be broken in half.
So maybe if we could, you know, reach out to them to...
Couldn't believe it. Couldn't believe it. That's not our deal.
Yeah, that's the only one, because we, we passed by, and it looked like, looked like some potential hazards over there. Yeah, and that's the only, only comment I have.
Mr. Tinkle?
Couple of things. We've got this requirement, we met with Lee County utility people, and it was more a non-engineering meeting. They want to have a meeting with the engineers, so I, I've sent to both Danny and to staff a copy of my best workout of creating an ERC projection for five years and build-out. We need to probably be getting that thing, because it's due the first meeting in, our first week in October, but I would much rather have it sooner than that, because we're gonna be having a meeting with their engineers and want to be able to talk. I didn't produce it at the last meeting, because it hadn't been approved by us here, and Chris tells me I have a couple of typos in it. So, that's one issue we need to be getting on. I said a couple. There weren't that many. I don't get paid to type. The other one is, is that I'm trying to get a meeting set with Morrison and Riley to fill in the blanks of the missing cut sheets of the videos that were done three, four, five years ago in Gateway Greens, to be able to fill out the number of sewers that have to be rehabilitated like we did at Silver Lake and Stony Brook. Right now, up to over a hundred and twenty manhole-to-manhole segments with twenty percent or greater blockage. So I want to get that put together. I have no idea of what that is gonna convert to a dollar. Danny, do you remember what was the per foot breakdown for Stony Brook? I don't remember either. I'm gonna, I, I just don't even have a wild guess. But what I want to do is, you know, we put in the budget a hundred and sixty-five thousand. I don't know how far that's going to go. But, working on that, and that's everything I have.
Oh, and, look, we need to make sure, how do you want to address that, the model, the flow model?
What flow model?
That we, that you were talking about, the one that-
I, I would like to take, well, I think, want to talk to staff to see about how we do that. You talking about the sanitary sewer, or are you talking about the weirs?
Uh, the weirs.
The master plan.
To me, both of them, the master plan.
Oh, yeah, whatever.
I think the first thing, what I'd like to do is talk with staff. But I think, just as importantly, I want to see the original design of Gateway. I think it, I know what, I was working back then. We didn't have the wherewithal to do the kind of design that you're doing right now.
Well, regardless of that, what you said is, we need to be either thinking about putting that into the plan for next year, the budget for the models.
I think we want to move it, I think we want to do it quicker than that. So, because when you want to do the construction on this, is when the dry season comes. We want to do that quickly, so.
I think part of the problem with Gateway, in essence, with its all, its drainage system is, we were cobbled together by different developers. And everybody went down and got their own plan and said, yes, we're gonna drain this much out. And, but it wasn't just like one developer that did the whole community.
Well, a good example, when you add up the 247, or you look at the 247 CFS, my question is, because I haven't been able to find the answer, does that include 550 acres to our east? Because it's coming our way.
High schools and all of it.
Well, the high school's in, but that was not in Gateway. It was allowed for, but my question is, is it in the 247? I don't think it is.
So, you're saying we need that sooner than later?
We need it sooner than later.
So, can we have staff, even maybe work with Stephen to see where, how much is it gonna cost?
But the key is, the key is, is we get that original plan that was done in eighty-five, that'll give them an idea as to what the challenge is of doing the model.
So the model on top of it, at least have a starting point?
Bingo. Bingo.
Okay, with nothing, oh.
Mike.
Just, Ted, one other thing, I just wanted to let you, the supervisors know, I have been in contact with two contractors, should, you know, the storm turn a bad way. I've, I've reached out, so we do have some emergency response with regards to Gateway Boulevard, if we have to push trees off the road. We do have some contractors, one being OAK right back here, and then another one that I know Stevens and Leighton though, would be able to help us out in the event that we get some trees down on Gateway Boulevard.
Do we have a contract with a, what do you call it, a, we have it at Gateway Greens, with mainscape that's got us a priority to remove trees if there's downing of trees?
I'm using another contractor for that. And it would just be pushing, for insurance purposes, we would just push the trees out of the way, so you could pass, and then-
We don't have it in the contract with them to do that?
That, they offered us that option, but the prices they had, wasn't real happy with.
Madam Chair, just a minute, one real quick thought. Michael, have you, have there been coordinations or conversations with Lee County, how to best, how to best position the district in its activities for any reimbursement from FEMA, if the county engaged in activities or the district does?
That would be something that we would, that we would do. And that's, that's why I said, that when we get trees down and things go south, we, you know, we push things out of the way, so we can get insurance reimbursement.
All right, so we need to continue this.
Motion to continue this meeting to next Wednesday, which is September fourteenth, thirteenth?
Is it Wednesday?
Six and seven, thirteen.
September thirteenth, yeah, 3:00 PM.
Were we gonna do Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday, Wednesday, September thirteenth.
Pelican Reserve's meeting on Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay. So that would be the thirteenth?
Yeah.
At three o'clock.
Kathleen has a question.
What if we're flooded?
Well, then we can, you can cancel the meeting, or, we'll see what happens at that time.
We'll send a vote.
I'll bring you, Kathy.
Stony Brook may be flooded, but the rest isn't going to be flooded.
I got, I got it.
I have two kayaks, I'll bring them up.
Can we use the boat?
I'll make that motion to continue the meeting.
Second, okay, all in favor? Aye.